Yeah.
Right, all right, this being the appointed time and place, see a form present so good meeting to order, you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you. Lynn, would you please take your role?
Diana Johnson here, Tina Johnson here, David Schrader.
Here.
David Smith.
Here.
Craig Wortman.
Here.
Fred Yan.
Here.
Tony Ernand.
Present.
Mike Higgins.
Here. Thank you. Looking at the agenda, do we have any changes to make the order items or anything? No. All right. Then the first portion of our agenda is recognition of staff retirements. You know, joined this evening by many of our wonderful retirees. Let's kind of step forward here. So retirees, when we call you, if you come up over here, it'll be fantastic. We'll stand right here, we're in camera view and you.
Okay.
All right.
So before we get started this evening. I do want to recognize the group of retirees this year. It marks six hundred and forty-five and a half years of knowledge and service to the students of Watertown. So I, I can't say anything more than how grateful we are as a school district to have had your service. So with that, we'll start with Pam, Pam DeRosier. I have a little something to read, Pam. Pam has been teaching third and fourth grade learners for our past thirty-four years. As a teacher and colleague here at WUSD, Pam has been a go-to for her teammates, administrators and colleagues. Always willing to bounce ideas around, learn new things to reach students. Creative connections with families and thinking of ways to improve whole school community. Throughout her career, Pam has been a mentor formally and informally to many new teachers, student teachers and high school students as they begin their journey in education. No matter the year or the project, Pam ensured that her team was functioning at a high level, putting students at the forefront of their work. Pam has demonstrated a high level of commitment to every student succeeding in all aspects of their education. From working collaboratively with colleagues to build student skills in reading, serving as a team leader focused on school climate. Building relationships between students through morning meetings. To helping students set personal goals for growth in academics and social skills. Pam is invested in the success and continued growth as an educator. At an integral, at an integral time in a child's education as they transition into independent third grade learners. Pam sets the bar high and helps students reach their potential. It's not uncommon to walk past Pam's classroom and wear a hearty cheer as students are applauding each other for a good job well done. She cares about students well beyond their time in the classroom, celebrating their successes and cheering them on as they grow. Douglas Elementary will not be the same without Pam DeRosier, and she has left a legacy in so many ways. Pam's colleagues know that she is always there to lend an ear, give advice, share a laugh. And appreciate her thoughtfulness and dedication so much. Congratulations Pam on your career impacting lives through education. Best wishes in your retirement.
For each of our retirees, we have a resolution recognizing their service from the board and they each have a gift. They had a choice of gifts, hence why there's two different kinds of bags.
Deb DeBake. Do you need that? Deb has served the Watertown High School since nineteen eighty-four in her role as special education support staff over the course of the last thirty-eight years. As a passionate educator, Deb supported countless students with significant disabilities, realized their potential at the high school. Deb easily built relationships with students and staff alike and was known for doing whatever it takes to ensure students found success. Deb's contributions to the reach program at the WHS goes on and on. Whether it's helping students to learn how to shop for groceries, do their laundry or any other life skill. Deb was always willing to roll up her sleeves and help students in any way she can. Deb was also regularly spotted in a, in the WHS parking lot. Long after the school day had ended collaborating with colleagues on how well to better support students. Deb always found a way to make students smile and have fun while learning at the same time. We hope Deb enjoys her retirement. Next, Deb Fisher. Everyone, Deb Fisher has served Watertown High School since nineteen eighty-eight. Her contributions to the Watertown community are endless as a, as a passionate educator of world languages at WHS for the past thirty-five years. As an educator, Deb was a passionate Spanish teacher and dedicated team leader for her department. Deb easily built relationships with students and staff alike, quick to laugh and always willing to lend an ear whether anyone needed support. Deb was known as an individual who always cheered on students' achievements, has written countless letters of recommendations for students. And through her ongoing advocacy helped focus staff time and again on what was best for students. Deb's involvement over the course of her career included a variety of roles, including but not limited to swim coach. Rotary ambassador, Badger State Boys and Girls Ambassador and local scholarship chair. Deb's work with community scholarships and WHS scholarship team would result in literally hundreds of thousands of dollars going to students. Embarking on their future college and career goals. Finally, Deb demonstrated a commitment to building staff culture throughout her career. She is seen as a trusted friend by many and a rumor has it, she throws great staff parties at her house. On a personal level, Deb loves to spend time with her family, including her husband Todd, son Cal, daughter Molly and her two grandkids. And she loves to travel. Deb will be dearly missed and we wish her all the best as she transitions to the world of retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, Tammy. Tammy Forrester. Tammy Forrester has served Watertown High School since nineteen eighty-nine. Her contributions to the Watertown community are endless as a passionate educator in the Watertown Unified School District for thirty-four years. Tammy's colleagues write, within minutes of meeting Tammy, if not sooner, you cannot help but see that she is a positive force of nature. Who goes above and beyond to support others. Tammy's unescapable contagious enthusiasm and infinite wardrobe always brightens our day. Even when we Wisconsinites haven't seen the winter sun in months. Those who work with Tammy immediately appreciate her thoughtful and sincere approach to challenging situations. Her students and now even her students' children continue to seek out her empathetic presence and advice well after they graduate high school. Tammy often answers her sessions with students or conversations with staff signing off with peace and love. From someone else, this may come across as cliche, but no one ever questions the sincerity of this when it comes from her. We wish Tammy nothing short of peace and love on all of her future adventures. As a school social worker, Tammy was a passionate advocate for students and dedicated member of the student services team. Tammy easily built relationships with students and staff and always quick to laugh or tell a joke. And was always willing to support anyone who came through her door in any way she was able. Tammy's involvement over the course of her career included a variety of roles, including but not limited to swim coach. Advisor of many groups, many student groups, including peer helpers, challenge day, mock crash, click it or ticket. And JJ or JCC. Tammy's work in the Watertown community has made a significant positive impact on the lives of countless students, family and staff. Tammy will be dearly missed and we wish her all the best as she transitions to the world of retirement. Teresa Gimmler. We've had the pleasure of working with Teresa in the WUSD for the past thirty years. And she celebrates retirement as the RMS speech and language pathologist. Teresa has many talents that she would quietly display. She is soft spoken and never wanted a lot of attention drawn to her, but she has many talents. Her greatest asset may be her calm and reassuring mannerisms. The students that Teresa shared with teachers always knew they would have her support both in the classroom and in small group settings. She would go above and beyond what was expected of her position and was always a steady, consistent, calming force. She was also a positive link between the teachers and our students. She knew how to help get the most out of students she supported and out of the staff she mentored. She was a rock star at RMS. She always exhibited patience and always appropriately assisted even the toughest student with consistency and fairness. Teresa was an absolute delight to work with throughout, oh excuse me, with though her quiet approach. She is funny, creative, consistent and honorable. She is persistently positive, will be sorely missed and impossible to replace at RMS. I'd like to recognize Elizabeth Hasi, not in attendance. Elizabeth has served students who are deaf and hard of hearing for forty-one years with the last eleven in Watertown. She is passionate about supporting her students to reach their fullest potential. She teaches them to advocate for their needs so that they are successful throughout their lives. She is one of few teachers who worked directly with her students throughout their entire career in the district, some at the age of three through the age of twenty-one. Over those years, her students and her families become like family to Elizabeth. Her dedication not only to her individual students, but to the field of deaf and hard of hearing teachers is second to none. We have been so lucky to have Elizabeth as Watertown Gosling and will miss her in return. Deborah Hamada.
Hey, Deb.
Mrs. Hamada started her teaching career at Schur's Elementary in nineteen eighty-eight. Where she was hired by Marty Kerwin as a long-term substitute for fifth grade. She had thirty-two students that first year and somehow managed with great support. Her second year, she moved to Webster and taught fifth grade another seven years. She switched to third grade after the birth of her daughter and has been there ever since. She had the pleasure to work with outstanding teachers and principals. Her fifth grade team included Chris Travis, Deb Brown, Sue Mouldenhauer, who became cherished friends. She taught third grade with Sue Roth for twenty-seven memorable years. She wants to thank her for her friendship and humor during challenging times. Over the years, her third grade team has also included Abby Riker, Gary Held, Rachel Ross, Ryan Venish and Diane.
Strigie.
Strigie, okay. All of which she truly enjoyed working with. She feels grateful for the wonderful support and leadership from Marty Kerwin, Joe Simon, Diane Benner and Brad Clark. She served on the PLC leadership team and as a student council leader for many years. It was extremely rewarding to see hundreds of students make gains over her long career. She has countless compassionate, she had countless compassionate paros and generations of support family come through her classroom. She says Webster has such a special place in her heart. I feel so much, I feel so fortunate for it, spent my whole career in Watertown, she says. Patricia Patty Jansen. Not attending tonight. Patty has served Watertown High School since nineteen ninety. Her contributions to the Watertown community are endless as a coach. As well as a compassionate educator in the classroom for thirty-three years. As coach Patty is known as one of the premier softball coaches in the state of Wisconsin, being recognized in the Wisconsin Bass Bix Coaches Hall of Fame. Coach Jansen has literally coached hundreds of players in over four hundred, or over four hundred and seventy program wins. Led Watertown to fourteen conference titles, sixteen regional championships, five sectional championships and two back-to-back state championship runner-ups. For her players, Coach Jansen took a no excuses approach to the game and demanded the very best of the team on the field and in the classroom. A true teacher, Coach Jansen prioritizes the personal development. Of her athletes' character above all else. In the classroom, Patty brought her enthusiasm, passion and work ethic from the softball diamond to the classroom. During the school day, Patty could often be heard as far away as the WHS Commons. Encouraged her, her fired students to achieve their very best. Miss Jansen was a resilient advocate for what is right and insists, excuse me, and instilled kindness, respect and a strong character in her students. Patty deserves special recognition for her work in the adaptive PE classes, serving students with significant disabilities. For many students, class with Miss Jansen was the highlight of their day. Patty was a true advocate, helping students maximize their potential and teaching an entire generation of mentors. What it means to support students while building their confidence and skills. On a personal level, Patty loves to spend time with her family, including her daughters Jordan and son Taylor and her five grandkids. Patty will be dearly missed and we wish Coach Jansen all the best as he transitions into the world of retirement. Didn't want to come off as dry. Sorry.
Thanks a lot.
Sherry, Sherry Krieger not in attendance this evening. Like to honor her by saying this. Now Sherry Krieger worked as a general assistant in nutrition services for twenty-one years at Watertown High School. In that time, she had direct contact with students on a daily basis during lunch. Over the years, as a point of sale operator, she had the opportunity to get to know many of our students. The rapport that she developed with students was something that she cherished. It was not unusual to observe Sherry providing an encouraging word to a student that was having a difficult day. Sherry enjoyed her work and exhibited such energy enthusiasm in completing her everyday tasks. She was always willing to take on additional tasks. Sherry was an individual asset to our team during the initial COVID-nineteen school closure. Sherry was a consistent face to our students and the larger community during the drive-through meal pickups outside WHS main entrance. Enduring every type of weather imaginable. Prior to holidays, Sherry could be spotted handling. Excuse me, handing out meals in various costumes or holiday attire. She continued to show her dedication throughout the following two years of uncertainty and constant transition between service models to ensure our students continued. To have access to school meals, always willing to do whatever we asked of her. Sherry's retirement in fall of twenty twenty-two has allowed her to enjoy the spoils of being a first-time grandma. We know that this new chapter is already beginning, are already bringing her such incredible joy. We are so very grateful for her commitment to students. To students, department and to WUSD. Tina Krieger. Everyone who knows Tina loves Tina and everyone knows Tina. Her colleagues appreciate her humor and enormous heart, her willingness to go above and beyond and to create a positive and welcoming culture. And she knows math, like really knows math. Tina has been instrumental in promoting positive staff morale from our, from, excuse me, organizing Christmas gatherings, snack days, celebrating weddings. And new babies, social outings, end of the year picnics and helping celebrate those who are retiring. Tina is always willing to lend a hand or an ear to those who need help. She has a positive outlook that is contagious. Some of her current and former colleagues wanted to share these comments. She has been teaching as long as Alex Eggar Pratt has been alive and Alex likes to remind her of that.
Every time.
Tina's, her babies are always rescue dogs who are pampered more than some humans are. Heard of Where's Waldo? It's been the same for Tina. She has been moved room. Moved rooms nine times and that doesn't include the three years that she traveled to different rooms. Tina has taught math, social studies and one long year of science. Having Tina in my life as a colleague and a friend has made me a better person. Riverside Middle School is grateful that we get to work with Tina and call her one of our own. Congrats on your retirement Tina, you will be greatly missed. Karen Lesh. Karen Lesh is retiring after thirty-two amazing years of service in WUSD. She has served in a variety of roles to support the students and staff at Riverside. A few of the highlights of Karen's most recent work include. Serving as a math teacher, math coach, math interventionist. Her work within the department greatly contributed to an excellent PLC structure in math. In one year, she served as both the math and meeting interventionist. What makes this more remarkable is. This was the year we returned to face-to-face instruction after COVID and the needs of our students were greater than ever. Critical members of RMS Assessment Committee providing leadership for staff on best practices and feedback in assessing student learning. Supporting and. Supporting and mentoring new reading interventionists, creating a systematic approach for identifying scheduling. And when appropriate, exiting students from intervention support. Working with fifth grade staff and our sixth grade math teachers to accurately assess and place students in an appropriate math class levels. Ensuring a smooth transition into RMS. Karen has been leading, excuse me, has been a leading voice in building initiatives, approaching challenges with a problem-solving attitude. And a really good sense of humor. Her credibility among the staff and administration is well deserved. And is considered as part of the foundation of RMS through her hard work, talent and accessibility. Riverside will miss you Karen. Enjoy your retirement. You gonna do this one? You gonna do this one? Aaron Meyer. This one's gonna be a little harder because I work with Aaron on a day-to-day basis. So Aaron Meyer has served thousands of children across many different settings over the past thirty-four years. Including twenty-six years here in Watertown. I'll get through this, don't worry. It would be difficult to succinctly describe the enormous positive impact Aaron has had in the Watertown School District during her career. As a volunteer teacher, principal and finally director, Aaron has always kept students at the center of her work. Whether it be through spearheading initiatives to create more inclusive spaces. And guess, investigating and implementing high-quality core curriculum, overseeing the implementation of Avid. NVCI and restorative practices, just to name a few. Aaron stays focused on her main goal, providing the highest level of service to students and families, especially for students with disabilities. Aaron has truly left a lasting legacy in our district. And if you know anything about Aaron, you know she is probably most excited about the two vans that she organized to purchase. To help support students, both our programs for students with disabilities and as the district as a whole. She will clearly and dearly be missed by her colleagues, students, family and the district. I know you haven't seen me like that. Just leave it. All right. Deb Pennell. Debbie has worked as a general assistant in nutrition services over the last twenty-six years. Debbie was fortunate enough to get the best of both worlds, working with both our youngest and with our oldest students. and with our oldest students in her time in the district. In the years prior to COVID nineteen, Debbie started out her day assisting with breakfast at Lincoln Elementary before prepping and providing second chance breakfast to students at Watertown High School, following first hour every day and finally returning to Lincoln to assist with serving lunch. Following the return to COVID nineteen school closures, department leads changed and she transitioned to spending her entire shift at Watertown High School. Debbie has a heart and true compassion for others, staff and students alike. She was well-known by most in the school community and knew how to make both students and staff feel seen and heard through a smile, wave or kind word. She is also passionate Packer fan and you could always count on her seeing, count on seeing her in green and gold leading up to the game, game day and getting chatted up about the prior gate, prior days game on Monday, Tuesday, or even sometimes Friday morning. Debbie will be missed. Her commitment to nutrition services to the district is so very appreciated. Susan Ryerson started out providing support in Pam Brown's blended kindergarten classroom. Two years later, she moved to the library with Doreen Nelson. Throughout her thirteen years in Library and Media Center, she saw many changes. At first, media time consisted mainly of storytime and book checkout. Then it moved to providing hour-long, excuse me, hour-long teacher prep time, including computer technology lessons and STEM programming. With these changes came extensive travel between all five elementary schools. The best part of the job was teaching, excuse me, teaching media lessons to elementary students without the full-time responsibilities as a certified teacher would have had. This gave her this, the time to make her family and, excuse me, a family priority during their school years at WUSD. Sue, Sue couldn't have done that without the expert direction and guidance under our media specialist, Doreen Nelson and her awesome team of media pros, Kristen Roberts, Sheldon Bergman and Kelly Surtick. Steve Schlecker, I saw him. Steve, Steve has served Watertown High School since nineteen ninety-eight. His contributions are endless and as a positive educator in the classroom, Steve has taught government to literally thousands of students over the course of his twenty-five-year career in addition to teaching superheroes and social issues as well as US history. Steve colleagues always knew him as one that would, one that would speak his mind and stick up for his high expectations for his students. Steve easily built relationships with students and staff and helped countless struggling students find success in his classroom. Over the course of Steve's career, there were countless adaptations to technology and instruction. And Steve was known by his department colleagues as a veteran educator who always worked with them to help adapt to his instruction to meet the needs of his students. Steve's storied career at Watertown High School has also included coaching football. Steve also, Steve was also a mainstay as a member of the chain gang on Friday nights during the home Gosling football games. On a personal level, Steve loves to spend time with his family, including his wife Kathleen, his sons, or excuse me, his children Katie, Jacob and Joe, and would always rather be outdoors and can often be seen around town walking his dog. He will be clearly missed and we wish him all the best as he transitions into the world of retirement. Joan began teaching in the Watertown School District in nineteen eighty-eight and worked and has worked at Shores, Douglas and Webster Schools. One of Joan's passions has been in serving the students on the autism spectrum, which led her to earning her master's degree as an autism consultant. In two thousand eight, while teaching at Douglas School, Joan won the Darcy Award for Teaching Excellence. Joan has developed and delivered staff training on various topics around autism. Over the years, she has served in leadership roles in the district in the areas of responsive classroom, behavior management and autism programming. Joan has been blessed to work with and learn from some phenomenal teachers and parent professionals over the years. There are far too many to mention. Some of Joan's favorite memories include seeing kids all decked out of their Christmas programs and just having fun during the field day activities. One of the best parts of her job has been the ability to serve in so many different classrooms, getting to know so many kiddos and watching her awesome co-teachers work their magic. Joan feels blessed to be able to spend her final years teaching at Webster School with such a dedicated, supportive team of coworkers and Brad Clark as her close friend. Susan Seaburn. Susan worked in nutrition services for twenty-six years. She was a cook at Watertown High School and assisted in the production of meals for Watertown High School as well as our district elementary schools and a number of private schools daily. Sue's experience was a great value to the Nutrition Services Department. She was always willing to share her experience and provide leadership to novice staff when needed. So also that, Sue also did a phenomenal job in mentoring a former reach student that worked in the kitchen. On a daily basis, she worked directly with the student to ensure that the work was set up ahead of time for the student's arrival and she provided instruction and a bit of oversight slash assistance in transitioning between assigned work tasks. With Sue's retirement this past fall, we know that she is enjoying her passion of baking for her family and spending quality time with all of her grandchildren. We are so appreciative of her lending her time and talents to feeding our students. Beverly Strobel, not attending tonight. Beverly's worked in the district for thirty-six years at three different schools, those being Lincoln, Lebanon and the last twelve years at Webster. The time has flown and, and I would not trade my experiences as an instructional pair for the world, she says. Yes, there have been, of course, yes, there have, of course, been ups and downs through years, but it's been a wonderful journey. She would like to thank Brad Clark for offering a position at Webster and for his support throughout the years. The teachers welcomed her into their classrooms and have always been very supportive and a joy to work with. Okay, Bonnie, I'm gonna try to get through this one. I also see Bonnie on a regular basis. So I, I just want to say thank you again for taking good care of us here. Bonnie has been a custodian with WUSD since December fourth, two thousand. Bonnie has helped keep our district sanitary and safe at multiple schools throughout the district, including high school, Lincoln, LEAP and the Educational Service Center. Bonnie has been an asset to our school and community during the time of service our students and staff over the last two decades. Bonnie also worked at the ALC, our alternative school, which has now turned into the Discovery Academy at M A T C. Bonnie goes above and beyond, especially in her discussions with Jared Burke, to make sure that the staff requests are taken care of. The SC staff always loves when she brings in treats for us. She is an expert baker. Her baking skills are phenomenal. She loves working here and you can witness that by how much of her heart and soul she puts into her job. We wish Bonnie the best in her next chapter of her future endeavors and hope she has time to celebrate with friends, family. Enjoy your retirement, Bonnie. I'll miss you. Bill Surtick, not in attendance. The Watertown Unified School District has benefited for decades from the talent and leadership of Bill. Bill begun, Bill began his employment in November nineteen eighty-nine as the night custodian for Riverside Middle School and Shores Elementary School. Two years later, Bill moved to Watertown High School and by May nineteen ninety-four was working in maintenance. Over the years, Bill became a walking encyclopedia of the HVAC and other building systems throughout WUSD. Bill became an informational leader and a go-to person for maintenance and custodial staff as well as building administrative and instructional staff. His work in relationship with staff, students were guided by a phrase he was, he was reported to share with others around him. Same team, same dream. During his time, Bill helped train several new supervisors of buildings and grounds, helped each becoming familiar with people and facilities of WUSD. In January of twenty twenty-two, Bill stepped into that leadership role, bringing along his vast knowledge and understanding as well as a proven record of hard work, integrity and fairness. Bill has experienced many, many unusual and emergency situations over the years, including broken pipes, innumerable snowstorms, backup drains and occasional pickup truck drivers mistaking Shores Elementary for a parking garage. Of course, most of these events occurred in the vicinity of two AM and Bill leaves behind a legacy of twenty-four hourly reliability. A staff person under Bill's leadership remarked that Bill's strengths brought the distinct, excuse me, the, the district maintenance and custodial standards to where they are today far superior to where the district was when Bill first began working with the WUSD. Bill's skills, knowledge and all-in commitment made the WUSD a better place for students, community and staff. On January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, Bill retired. It was reported that some in the WUSD still have Bill on speed dial for quick consultation or guidance. While we will miss Bill and his leadership for some time, we wish him a retirement filled with family enjoyment and laughter. Last but not least, Chris Travis. Not attending. Chris Travis has been connected to WUSD for over thirty-four years. She is a passionate and diligent educator. Her ability to relate to challenging content to young minds is inspiring to her fellow science teachers. Chris is creative and committed to serving her students and school. Her work in leading and maintaining the RMS greenhouse and garden is greatly appreciated. Chris welcomes community, community participation as the Watertown community has been able to take advantage of garden plots in front of RMS. She even makes Jason think he has a green thumb. Is that true? Okay. Students were able to see the farm-to-table concept clearly as vegetables grown in the garden were used in the RMS cafeteria for student lunches. How very cool. Chris has been a great cheerleader, serving all students in her classroom, regardless of their skill level, ability or need. We have always been grateful for her support and leadership she demonstrated in making her science classroom a welcoming place for everyone. Chris agreed to return to the classroom on a part-time interim basis for the fourth quarter this year to help out her sixth grade colleagues and the building. We all appreciate her willingness to put for, put her full retirement on hold for a few more weeks. Chris will be missed at RMS. Her fellow Panthers wish her well in her future endeavors.
That concludes our retiree presentations for this evening. Thank you all very much. We cannot say enough about it. We have one more act as a board to make in this regard. If you want to stay for the final action, that'd be great. So fellow board members, can I hear a motion? For resolution ninety-two zero one through ninety-two twenty-two.
Motion.
Moved by Fred, seconded by Diana. Comments or questions on the motion? I would say, I mean, every year has been a great hiring year for district, but listing those biographies, seems like nineteen eighty-nine, we had a really great draft that year. Of the standout year, so. All right, hearing nothing else, all those in favor, speak to five by saying aye, aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you all very. All right, our next item is public input is one of two items on the agenda where members can publicly address the board. When you would like to do so, please just wait to be recognized. Step up to the podium. There is a register on the podium. We'd appreciate you putting your name and address down on there. And if you could please keep your name and address for the record. And lastly, I ask that you keep your march brief, just a couple, three minutes, right? Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized this evening to address the board, please?
That's quite a recognition you have. Lots of people there. My name is Lyndon Paco and I'm Steve Paco's wife. And Steve spends quite some time with many of you here on the board. He's fishing now, so he's not here. But like you, I am here out of concern for our children. My topic, transgenderism and what can we do about it on a local level? Please bear with me. I have three points. Point number one is a question. Is transgenderism healthy and good influence on our children or is it unhealthy? With significant irreversible outcomes? Let's take a look at some recent news dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Eighteen-year-old. Eighteen-year-old trans died from complications after doctors tried to create a vaginal vagina. Inside the Journal of Pediatric and Adolescent Gynecology published a study recently about a formerly healthy eighteen-year-old boy who underwent a ghastly and barbaric transgender affirmation surgery that resulted in his death. The report explains that a team of surgeons castrated the boy before cutting a hole in his crotch to remove a portion of his colon, the material of which they would then use to try to create a fake vagina so he could pretend to be a girl.
This is, I'm sorry, Mrs. Copeland, I'm gonna ask you to.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna ask you to. Please.
I didn't hear you.
Avoid making remarks specific to those.
Well.
Those procedures.
Okay, but it's happening.
People watching and receiving would not know what to expect and they may not.
This is the news that is happening, okay? So I know it's horrible. Increasingly, more transgenders are coming forward to admit that they wish they'd never had transition. If they could go back, they say they wouldn't undo all the misery and pain and go back to normal. If only someone had warned them rather than firmly down. And maybe you've heard about this report. Trans women showered with four Wisconsin high school girls. Exposed bright privates, parents not informed. In early March, four freshman girls at Summery High School participated in swim unit as part of their first hour of bio class. After the class, girls entered the shower area and the girls blundered with their swimsuits on, which was their common practice as they were in school. As they began to shower, a male student who was eighteen years old, according to multiple sources approached them. He entered the shower area and announced, I'm trans by the way. The male student then fully undressed and exposed his male genitalia to the four girls in the showroom. Dan Lennington, deputy counsel added, public schools have two basic terms. Educate our kids and keep them all safe. All too often our schools can't do either. This is a wake-up call to all parents and taxpayers to become more informed about their local public school district and demand accountability. Another article, transgender surgeries linked to horrific and awful fatal infections. I now live in a painful body that no longer belongs to me. Let's jump into the suicide factor. Authors warn transgenderism is confusing people about the nature of reality and victimizing young, uh, victimizing children. They try as they might to claim that pushing transgenderism on children is a form of love and acceptance. The truth of the matter is that the range leftists are lying to children and their parents about what transgenderism is really about. It's about money. It's about depopulation. Transgenderism is an industry. And no, children are not more likely to commit suicide if they are denied a trend, denied a gender transition. And finally, the National Library Medicine Reports, data indicate that eighty-two percent transgender individuals consider killing themselves and forty percent of them commit suicide. And then there's another one.
This is called, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you could work toward bringing your remarks to a close, please. Sid, if you could please bring your remarks to a close very soon, please.
Bring my remarks to a close. I'm disappointed. This is a serious issue.
Yes, it is, but ma'am, there's a limited amount of time for speaking.
Well, the bottom line is, is, um, we have books that are influencing our children and they need to be looked at and they need to either be marked as parental, um, parental permission or be taken off the shelves, but at the very least, we need a balance of information on the, on the library shelves. Thank you very much.
And if you would like to leave copies of any of the articles.
I never got to it. It's wonderful. It's too bad. That's excellent. And you can hear it, but very, very good information. So thank you.
Thank you. Others would like to be recognized, please.
Are all of these board members or just some of them?
Board members starting here.
Diana. Fred. Wasn't sure how many of these to make.
If you also could copy to our deputy coordinator.
You guys can share. Dina. You're a board member and you're a board member, right? And David, you're a board member, right?
I am.
Perfect. Okay, great. So it was nice to have something to look at when someone's speaking to you. So I want to talk about same topic.
That's right, ma'am. You gave your name and address to the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Jackie El. I live on thirteen oh one Allworth Street in Watertown.
Thank you.
Now grooming is a process whereby children are introduced and trained into having sex with adults, but that's normal. This is pornography and it's illegal for our state statute in Wisconsin, especially in those under eighteen years old. It serves only the pedophiles who are attempting to brainwash the children into believing that this is normal. Grooming needs to be stopped immediately. Sex changes are pushed in this group. Groomers push the mantra that a person's sex can be changed. I'm a medical professional. It doesn't work that way. Basic biology is in our DNA and can't be changed via hormone drugs or surgery. It is irreversible. Children who undergo heavy medication or hormones and body mutilation are prone to mental problems from the hormone drugs and suicide. Now, what I've brought for you is our look into the Watertown Unified School District. And I have brought for you, first of all, the FBI pedophile codes. And this is what the FBI uses to locate and arrest predators of children. The next thing I have, I just took two lists. Uh, the first list is by the Iowa Mama Bears. This is a nationwide effort of parents to clean out books that may be questionable in our school districts. So the first list is from the Iowa Mama Bears. The second one is just another list that were provided by anonymous parents of sexually explicit contact. And then what I did was I took those two lists and I compared them to our libraries in the city of Watertown. So the first school that I looked at was Douglas Elementary School. And I have provided for you the four books that are discovered on our list of library books. It includes the authors, the, the name of the book, the authors, and then the call numbers, how you will locate them in the school system. The next one is Lincoln Grade School. There were only three books there. The next one is Shirts Elementary School. There is only one book there. And by the way, some of these I've listed. There has been some evaluation of the books by parents and they categorize them according to what are the questionable contents in each of the books. So you'll see by the name of these documents by each book, there is a listing of what the parents have found to be questionable in these books so that you can verify it for yourself. You're the school board, you're in charge of this stuff. The next one is Webster Elementary School. There were only two books that were found questionable in that area. The next one is Riverside Middle Sewell and there were a number of books, uh, three pages worth that we discovered would be a problem and questionable material for our children to look at. And finally, we went into Watertown High School. Now remember, there are two lists. The first list is from the Iowa Mama Bears and that is the one where we have the reasons why they found this material questionable. They've documented this. The second list is a booklet from the anonymous parents and these lists do not have the reasons that the parents found it questionable. It's just located in the list that these are extremely questionable. There's many pages of information that you have now in your hands of what parents are looking at across the country as books that are questionable material that we may or may not want to have our children reading. So just be aware that the FBI is on top of this and there have been a lot of arrests in the last two months across the country of predators that work on children as young as, oh man, two and three years old. And of course, all the way up into the teenage years. And when they're arresting, when the FBI is arresting these groups, they're finding the nest of predators that are trafficking these children to pedophiles. So it all starts with grooming. Grooming is what is causing this problem and grooming has been occurring in Watertown, most notably last summer when there was a drag queen show. You know what, if you don't know what that is? That is where men dress up as women and dance provocatively in front of children with some of their parts occasionally being bare for the children to get accustomed to. This is something that's happening across the country. This is where parents are uniting in saving their children and making sure that their children, in addition to their good quality education, are protected as well. And so this is why we've come to you tonight because seeing is believing. This is what you have in the Watertown Unified School District. And this might be something that the school board might take to heart because it is a problem nationwide and we want our children to be protected in the Watertown Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to be recognized this evening? Anyone else recognize this company? Anyone online? Right, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. This brings us to announcements and recognition and the first up is our high school student board representative. Shai Stappel.
Alright. Hello, everyone. I'm Drew Shai, a senior from Watertown High School. Thank you, school board, for having me back one last time to serve as a student representative. Here are some happenings this past month at WHS. The Watertown High School class of nineteen seventy-two visited us this past month and was greeted to a drum line and many cheering students who accompany a full tour of the building that they didn't even go to. Um, in sports, the girls softball team won conference against Milton. A tennis team member, James Walker, won the conference championship for singles three. And the track team won three events and set numerous PRs at the conference meet. The school's music programs are having their last performances with band's final concert being tonight, the orchestra concert on May eleventh and the Coral Pops concert last Saturday. The service clubs have been big cleaners this month with Interact and NHS both hosting community cleanups around the city's parks and streets. Over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarships were awarded to the class of twenty twenty-three in an unforgettable ceremony. The top winners of the night were Abby Walsh, Ava Ashenfalter and Brendan Boyd. The event was filled with emotional readings, a wide representation of the Watertown community, Dr. Burke saying my name for a scholarship. And ultimately lives changed for many students. Uh, students were fascinated last week when award-winning science and tech expert Justin Schaper, AKA Mr. Fascinate, talks to students about why STEM is dope. Those are his words. The speaker's visit was yet another example this month on how Watertown has many opportunities for students to advance themselves. I'd like to give a couple of shout-outs, uh, first to the school's administration for handling the colossal task of leading another year at the high school. Mr. Kerr, Mrs. Pennington, Mrs. Ball, Mrs. Perkel, Mrs. Piaszeki, Mr. Kep and all of the other administrators do an amazing job each year. And I'd also like to thank you, the school board, for your continuous dedication and commitment to the education and well-being of every student in Watertown High School and the district. Your decision-making and policy implementation have been key factors in shaping the last twelve years of education for my peers and I. And it has enabled us to reach our potentials. So thank you. And we have just one future event, graduation, which is closely on the horizon with around two hundred and sixty seniors expected to walk the stage on June tenth. The ceremony will comprise of faculty speaker, Mrs. Fisher's address, the student Alicia Cazina's commencement speech and Ben Gifford and Abby Walsh's closing remarks. Before I conclude, I would like to express my gratitude to everyone here for their immense support and cooperation. It is because of everyone's collective efforts here that we will go on as seniors to lead successful lives and further contribute to the Watertown community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have school career recognition. Sarah Tarpie, step forward, please.
Sarah Tarpie, I am the school coordinator for Watertown High School. Thanks for listening. And I have other jobs, I'm actually a county coordinator, so I handle not only their wonderful school, but also nine others in the county. So this year we wanted to share some information about our seniors. Now each year we typically have a recognition and we have all the students, their parents and employers line up, maybe recognize, maybe you have a certificate. But we have so many kids in the program that we have to separate them because it couldn't ever be here, especially with retirement today, which are awesome to see. Um, so I wanted to give you some fast facts about our students for this year. I think I've selected on the Zoom. I don't know if I can get that to click it. I'm clicking it. I guess not, no one. Does somebody have a cursor on the laptop? There we go. Um, so right now we have seventy-one seniors, uh, some fast facts for you. We are, our highest GPA is a four point oh and our low GPA is a zero point six six seven. I think that's important to point out because we have students from all different backgrounds, all different value systems in this program. Our average GPA is a three point oh. Uh, our highest wage this year, we have students, a couple of students actually making twenty dollars an hour in our average rate, uh, for hourly is two twelve eighty. And then a hundred percent of our students in the program are graduating. And of that seventy-one, we have forty-five who are going to college, seven who are going on to adult apprenticeships, which is awesome because we have what's called youth apprenticeship. And it bridges over to registered apprenticeship. And so those students who are gaining those skills as high school students are able to use those hours directly into their adult apprenticeship. We have four going on to advanced training, two for military and fifteen who are continuing to work with their, um, with their employer. So we first off, we have the childcare skills program that is run through the Department of Public Instruction and it is run through the Department of Public Instruction. So overseas programs like how children should work with a teacher. So our students go through, uh, was called an assistant childcare teacher program and they get their license in both assistant uh, childcare teacher and infant toddler. And then they get a job in a licensed childcare center here in the area. And then, um, they are awarded their lead teacher license. So right out of high school, they can start as a teacher in a licensed childcare center, which is pretty awesome. So the two students we want to recognize in this program, the first one is we've got Brooke. Uh, Brooke works with Crossroads Kids Connection, early childcare teacher. Her future plans are to go to UW-Whitewater for the early childhood education program. And then next we have Olivia. She also works at Crossroads Kids Connection and she plans to go to UW-Whitewater to become a writer.
Then we step in, uh, as you can see with those kinds of new apprenticeship program is in the thirty-second, excuse me, thirty-second year of the program. Uh, basically what it is, it's an employer-driven training program where the students go to their job. They not only can correlate between what happens in the classroom to what the real working world is like, but they can also learn what they might not be able to learn in the classroom. They get some students are more hands-on. So when it comes to the ones that maybe have that point six six GPA, they can graduate. This program has helped a lot of students that may have been falling behind or may not have known what they want to do with their lives to actually get a chance to go the world and find a meaning and keep, and keep going to their graduation. Um, there's currently eleven career cluster areas, but we're proud to say that education and training and business management administration are coming on. So now her co-op students will have the advantage that they'll be able to join the Y program. Very, very long time now that students have been asking us, the career person, when are you going to have to teach you? When are you going to have to teach you? We're proud to say we can finally have it this coming year and we actually met the, uh, the counter figure? Yeah, in the house that actually got the sign on at the bill. We thank her so much. It was, it was fabulous. And perfect, it should be up later, who always talk with. Uh, students participate for the one to two years. They can start at the end of their sophomore year. So we have students as young as fifteen joining the program. I'll go to the next slide. So these are currently the different cluster areas that we have and the only one that we do not have anybody from currently in the Watertown High School is arts and AV technology, communication and information technology. Otherwise, we've had students that have aspirate of pretty much over the years, every category we have.
So we separated by different career clusters, so you can get an idea. So our first cluster is our agriculture, food and natural resources pathway. You might have already heard of Brandon Boyd, he was awarded a many scholarships and he was in the animal herd youth apprenticeship. And he plans to go to UW-Madison, double majoring in agronomy and agricultural business management. He plans to continue working on his family farm during and after college. Next, we have Gray Goodenkov. He also works on his family farm and he also is in the agricultural animal herd pathway. And he plans on getting his CDL and continuing working on his family. Next up, we have Lauren Hanson. She worked at Laughing Gosh with small animals, uh, working at her apprenticeship with animal fundamentals. And she actually is transitioning pathways into construction apprenticeship. Ian Hoffman, he is working at Mess that Dairy and he also has animal herd and he is choosing to go into operating engineer in the, in the beginning of next year.
This is, I played a little video. There is actually a video for him.
It does, yeah.
It says request access.
Okay, I think it just did nice, yeah. Okay, I think it just did nice, yeah.
Ethan Johnson, also working on a family farm, but this time with crops rather than animals. And his future plans are to go to the Milwaukee School of Engineering for mechanical engineering. Like, we have Alexis Martinez. He also works for a family business, Martinez Landscaping, and he plans to continue that in the future. Next up, we have Nick Olson. He worked for Maple Mountains Farms for a crop apprenticeship, and he plans on working at Jelly Farm, and rumor has it, he might go into a partnership with them. And Sawyer Billy, he is working at the Pressful Steams with the animal fundamentals, and he plans to go to C D L licensed school. Next up, we have the architecture and construction pathway. We had Kate Dittemberger, for Ace and Heating and Cooling, working in the construction apprenticeship for HVAC, and he plans to continue on an apprenticeship with plumbing and hoover. At the least, she worked for the company Contractors, and she did the carpentry apprenticeship, and she's going to attend UW-Walki School of Architecture and continue working for you. Lucas, he works for Tru Specialist. He's also in the carpentry apprenticeship, and he plans to continue working with Tru Specialist. Next up, we have Lavender Slender. He works for Polly's Plumbing, and he did the plumbing construction apprenticeship, and he plans to go to Waukegan Technical College for fun. Next up, we have Nick Tracy, who works for Moss Brothers Construction in the Carpentry Apprenticeship, and he plans to continue his apprenticeship with Moss Brothers into adult apprenticeship. Next, we have Caleb Wickelman. He works for Abe Wickelman Concrete, so the concrete apprenticeship, and he plans to continue working for his family business. Finance Pathway. We have Callie Peter. She worked at State Bank of Resil, and she's in the banking apprenticeship, and she plans to go to UW-Lacrosse or Madison College next year. Lucy Spending, she also works with the State Bank of Resil in the finance YA for banking and continue, wants to continue working for the State Bank of Resil after graduation. See, State Bank of Resil is really representing today. They also have Kaden Wagner, who's one that actually is a apprenticeship coordinator in Jamesville. He plans to go to UW-Whitewater for entrepreneurship. The health sciences pathway, a huge pathway in Watertown. This is Cara Burke. She works for Watertown Vision for an optical apprenticeship, and she plans to go to Madison College for optician. Kaden Spencer, she works at Heritage Homes for the resident A U apprenticeship, and she plans to get into cosmetic nursing. Ella Bolz, she works at Mark Court Village. She worked in the office, her medical office apprenticeship, and she plans to go to UW Stevens Point for wildlife calique. Alexis Hansen, she works at Heritage Homes for resident A U apprenticeship. She plans to go to UW-Oshkosh for the Early Childhood Development Institute. Andrea McDonald, she also works at Heritage Homes, resident A, and her future plans are to go to Blackhawk Technical College for diagnostic medical sonography and breast lift technology. Adeline Mendoza-Pasta, she is a specialist student. She actually is in two youth apprenticeships. So the first apprenticeship you'll see her in is the area dental clinic. It is very challenging for students to be in two apprenticeships because they require at least two classes related to that apprenticeship, as well as four hundred and fifty work hours. So just kind of pointing out how awesome she is.
For both jobs, so nine hundred dollars to do the two of them for one year.
Yeah. She was in the dental apprenticeship, and she plans on continuing working as an assistant in the area dental clinic and then begin her general courses for dental hygiene. Lisa Minor, she works at Creative Community Living Services at the Medical Office apprenticeship, and she plans to go to UW-Walki. Tanner Pirate, works at the doctor's physical therapy here in town for the physical therapy A U apprenticeship, and he plans to continue studying physical therapy at Carroll University. Mackenzie Strobus, she works at, excuse me, at Heritage Homes as a resident A for her youth apprenticeship, and she plans to go to Madison College for radiology. Next up, hospitality. We got Lily Ann Vassarash at Amados Junior, and she worked, she did two apprenticeships her junior year. She did the food and beverage. In the second year, she did a marketing apprenticeship with professional sales, and she plans to go to UW-Walki. Jassa Bullen, she worked at PJ PIPA, the hospitality YA, and she plans to go to Madison College to study sciences. Adam Ron, he works at Callers for the hospitality apprenticeship, and he plans to go to Madison College for psychology. Jenna C. Fisher, she is now a manager, she's very proud of that, at Starbucks and Johnson Creek for the hospitality apprenticeship, and she plans on continuing to manage there and to go to college in the future. Jenna C. Oshchow, she works at Watertown Subway and Hospitality Youth Apprenticeship, and she plans to continue working at Subway. Julie Calda, works at Verne Horizon Foods and Markport and the Food and Beverage apprenticeship, and she plans to go to UW-Oshkosh to study criminal justice. Maddie Minkus, she works at Taco Bell here in Watertown in their food and beverage apprenticeship, and she plans to go to Carroll University or UW-Stevens Point for photography. Cody Martin, works at QuikTrip here in Watertown for hospitality YA. He plans to continue working for friendship. Avielle Miller, works at Pizza Ranch in Watertown and the hospitality YA, and continue working for Pizza Ranch at high school. Ronnie Roderick, yes, she works in Main Street Cafe, the hospitality YA, and she plans to pursue a career in nursing. Cynthia Schlesser, works in Jimmy John's here in town, and she, she continues to work in town here. First, to me, Meyer, she worked at Watertown Subway as well in hospitality YA, and she plans to go to UW-Walki for biomedical science. And then Brianna Uker, she also works at Jimmy John's for the food and beverage YA, and she plans to go to UW-Nexis next year. Next up, we have our marketing student. Madeline Brass, she works at Crocs and for the marketing YA. She plans to go to UW-Oshkosh for elementary education. Christina Callan, she works at Blaine's Farm and Fleet and the marketing professional sales apprenticeship, and she plans to go to Tri-Coki University of Beauty Culture. Mackenzie Sharier, she works at Journey Salon, and she's in the marketing apprenticeship, and she plans to go to VC Beauty School for cosmetology. Natalie Cox, she works here in Walmart in town, and she does a marketing apprenticeship, and she plans to go to Carroll University for Criminal Justice College. Cindy Hoffman, she works at Old Navy for the marketing YA, and she wants plans to continue working at Old Navy at high school. But Clayton Ivy, works at Ace Hardware here in town, and he's also in the professional sales YA, and he plans to go to UW-Plattville to study engineering. Alexis Jewell, she works at Almost Paradise and the professional sales YA, and she plans to go to UW-Oshkosh, majoring in elementary education and minor in business, along with pursuing criminal state life. That sounds like, oh, girl, oh, good show. Diversifying there. Jordan Mall, she works at Boomi's. She is in the marketing YA, and she plans to continue working at Boomi's. Actually, Sophie, she is working at Laughing Donate, of course, in the hospitality YA, and she plans to go to UW-Stout for business administration. Ari Silva, she is working for diversified personnel services from the marketing YA, and she plans to go to UW-Whitewater for legal studies and business. And then Vinnie Ambana, works for Teefesture Massage Therapy for Marketing YA. He plans to go to Crown College for exercise science. Brittany Uker, she works at Blaine's Farm and Fleet, and she's also in the marketing YA. She plans to go to UW-Plattville for pre-precision assistance. Next up, we have our manufacturing pathway. So we got Jermaine Brine. He works at Baker Roman Manufacturing Incorporated for the welding apprenticeship, and he plans to continue his welding apprenticeship at Baker Roman. This, your S, we're at Inner Pack for manufacturing, packaging, and assembly, and plans to go to UW-Stevens Point for business administration. Dana Chavers, works at Dave's of that product for the packaging and assembly YA, and plans to go to UW-Oshkosh for criminal justice. Dante Dearhorn, he works at Truck Bikes for the packaging and assembly YA, and he plans to go to Murray Park Package for models to study the alignment. Gary McRae, he works at Skripit, and in the manufacturing process YA, he plans to continue working there. Devin McGuire, works at Lori Global Solutions in the maintenance repair YA, and he plans to go to Iowa State University for electrical engineering. This is our girl Adali again. She worked at Inner Pack in the packaging and assembly, and again, she continues to work at Area Dental Department. Caleb Parent, he works at Fisher Barton for the packaging and assembly YA, and he plans to go to Jackson University for sports management. Colin Richkey, he works at Deb Wholesale and Packaging and Assembly YA, and his future plans are to get into electrician apprenticeship and the army, so another two for him. Logan Ripper, looks familiar because they worked together, also works at Fisher Barton Packaging Assembly at UW-Whitewater and studying business. Nala Galde, he works at Salians Corporation for the machining apprenticeship. He plans to go into a plumbing apprenticeship next year. Dan Villarreal, he works at Diamond Precision Products for the machining YA, and he plans to join the concrete at GP Cullen. And we have Christian Vastrop. He works at Truck Warehouse, the packaging assembly, and he plans to attend Lock and School of Engineering to be a part of their honors program and study electrical engineering and computer sciences. He also plans to receive a certificate in Spanish afterwards in hopes of furthering his education with a master's degree in resistance or aerospace engineering. Next up, we have our STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math pathway. We have Karis Johnson, who Heather referred to earlier. The bottom picture there is when we went to the Capitol to talk about YA and how important it is to varsity and continue investing in programs like these. She actually worked for our city department in the civil engineering with engineers there, so she did the engineering YA, and she plans to go to the Milwaukee School of Engineering, so studying civil engineering and participating in the Air Force ROTC, so another super. And then James Walker, he worked at Fisher Barton and the engineering apprenticeship, and he plans to attend the York City John Hopkins School of Engineering for material science, engineering, and a minor in biology. And last but not least, one of the biggest pathways in the state that we really need people to work in is transportation, distribution, and logistics. We have Colin Bingham. He works at Babbling as automotive technician and plans to get a CDL license background. Dean Simon, he worked at A1 Oil as an automotive technician, and he is working, planning to work in either construction or welding next year. And then Nicholas Wechsel, who worked at Redwood Ford for his automotive technology technician YA, and his future plans are to continue working on. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to leave to one of us. We just wanted to give a moment, so thank you for allowing that to ignite all of our seniors who participated in the collaborative skills and apprenticeship.
And before we go, I just want to give accolades to Sarah. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have somebody graduating seniors in the program. Originally, the program for this year, for this grant period, we slated for a hundred and ninety-five students. We're finishing out the grant year at three hundred. The two biggest schools, the only one that slightly rivals Watertown is Fort Atkinson. Both Sarah and Angie in Fort Atkinson do amazing work with these programs, and they really keep me up until as far as getting paperwork and students sign up. So, you know, hand to you.
So next, we have two items that were from our annual board of organization. The first is to designate a delegate to the WASP legislative session. So this occurs at the WASP Annual Convention in January. And the, our delegate is our vote at that assembly. So that's the official business portion of that at annual meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to volunteer to represent the board?
Sure. After Doug gave such a we're here to view of the events last year. How could you not? Sure. Now you all owe me one.
All right. So I assume there's no others that want to step forward to that. All right. Thank you very much, David. And then for Watertown Family Center Designee, I know Fred, you have been on that board. I know you were representative of Board David, but I assume you have no objection if Fred steps into that.
I nominate Fred.
We don't need an actual official nominee. So everyone's in agreements? All right. Thank you very much for representing us for there, Fred. And also, under announcements and recognition.
I've got a couple of announcements for you tonight. Bus Electric Contracting LLC gave five hundred and fifty dollars towards our Skills USA program and wanted to be recognized. Also, we have two amazing staff members who went above and beyond this last year looking for more professional development in a couple of areas. The first is David Lishka. He is our custodial team over at Webster. He completed the WASBol Facilities Manager Certification Program. The program was developed by School of Facilities Committee and is designated to provide facility managers and those responsible for school facilities with current knowledge and best practice as they seek to fulfill their responsibilities, providing safe and healthy environments for our students and staff. So congratulations to David Lishka. And the other happens to be Sarah Duncan, who's sitting right over to the right of me over there. And she has completed the WASBol Certified School Risk Manager Designation or CSRM. The program is developed for the professional development of risk management, giving participants a competitive edge in school risk management knowledge. This curriculum and national designation are provided by the National Alliance of Insurance Education and Research. It is recognized by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, who will also fix their signature to this certificate. Congratulations to Sarah Duncan.
Right, congratulations to Sarah and David. Are there any other announcements or communications at this time? All right, then we move on to strategic discussion. We have just one item this evening, and that is an update on ESTR two and ESTR three and proposed final budget items.
Hey, with that, I will keep the discussion over to this company.
So the document loaded in Word docs gives a summary of where we are with spending for ESTR two and ESTR three. So it shows what we did for allocated and what's been spent as a negative. So there's probably a few things that would become up here as well. And then if you go all the way to page four of this document, actually, sorry, on page three, there's a summary of what's been allocated and spent, what's been allocated but not spent yet, and then what is remaining to be budgeted. This document is showing what is remaining to be budgeted for ESTR two and for ESTR three on page four. And then beneath that, we have a list of items that are potentially what we're proposing as potentials for using that remaining funds. And some of those have numbers by them. They're numbered in order of what the administrators and the cabinet ranked for their first two bit choices.
Brad, would you like to summarize the discussion at fiscal? Would you like me to do that? Um, go ahead. Okay, so this was reviewed at the fiscal meeting last week. So again, quick recap. Last June, or event, yeah. The board approved a spending plan for the ESTR two and ESTR three. At that time, and leading up to that, the administration had presented to the board a list of options. Those options, we asked that they be, that they exceed the amount available, and they did. The board made selections from that list. There were also some items that we selected but reduced the amount on, such as the math curriculum. And we purposely left roughly seven hundred thousand dollars not allocated. We knew we had an administrative change. It was pending at that moment. We wanted to give the new superintendent some options to work with there, as well as looking for other ideas that might come forward in an interim period. So here we are, a year later. And the list you see presented, what we wanted to do, and this was discussed at a previous fiscal meeting, was give us a comprehensive overview of the previous allocation and the previous amounts available. Tell us what definitely had not been allocated at this time. It is important to note that this board did make a commitment for a portion of those previously unallocated funds because the HDAC projects came in higher than the estimate. But we knew that, we expected that at that time. We knew at the time when we approved those, that those books we were looking at were almost a year, two years old. We knew they'd come in higher. So we had already allocated a portion of it, which is why if you look at page four, the truly unallocated portions are roughly six hundred thousand dollars. Of all of those projects that we had previously approved. they all remain in track. There will be a progress report at future date to show where we are in all those projects, as well as either final interim accounting on those projects. But the important part is the unallocated portions. And I say they were all represented except for the community tutoring program. Which the administration's recommendation was that those funds that had been a part of that previous allocation would be reallocated. That's the administration's recommendation. Which is why if you look at the table on top of page four, you see $200,000 from ESTR two that was unallocated period. You see $400,000 from ESTR three, again, unallocated period. And you see a total of $75,000 for the tutoring program that the administration recommending that we reallocate. So the fiscal committee reviewed this information. We reviewed the proposed items. We had already heard about number one request, which is the interactive displays at a prior meeting. And the observation at fiscal was if you take the top two, the interactive displays and the additional funding for math curriculum, you're already looking at $550,000. Five hundred fifty out of six hundred was unallocated. Again, there's another seventy five that administration recommended we allocate. At that same meeting last week, we were also reviewing the proposals for our printing needs, printing and copier needs and that project. And I believe I can properly summarize the committee's sense was that we should proceed with the interactive displays. We should proceed with the math curriculum. And that we should apply the remaining amount toward the turnover of the copiers and printers. And the only question mark is, is that just $50,000? Or is it fifty plus the seventy five in the tutoring, which would be 125? And there were members of the committee that feel strongly about the tutoring program. So Brad did it again, right?
With one exception.
Okay.
The committee also talked in regards to the printers and copiers with the lease model versus the print model.
Yes.
And after discussing that with Dave and how that works as far as the printers, the committee's recommendations go forward with the purchase model.
Right, sorry. Yeah. So that was, that was the predication of why we would put money from this board. That because instead of doing the five-year lease, the committee was inclined to instead do the purchase of that, which is roughly $300,000.
And saves the $60,000 more than the leasing law.
So again, the committee's recommendation to the board is proceed with item one, which is the interactive displays. And you have some different information on that. We can discuss that if necessary. With item two, which is the math curriculum. And again, important to note that when we originally approved our ESTR allocation last summer, we took the recommended amount, which is roughly 900,000, and reduced it to 600,000. So this, you do the logic there. It takes it back up close to what it was originally recommended. And again, that the remaining funds go toward the purchase of the copiers. And the only question remaining is, is that just $50,000 toward that? Or is it potentially $125,000 if you also apply, reallocate the tutoring funds? Are the questions about how, first of all, are there questions about how I summarize? There's only, I've added twenty to we, kind of said that we realized that there's some cleanup of some pluses and minuses that need to happen. And we don't want to get bogged down with that right now. But we'd like the administration rather rapidly to particular focus on ESTR two, get that cleaned up. And then likewise be in a good position on ESTR two to know what those pluses and minuses is. We'll start to shake out that. Right. That's what it's right, having, having an update of where those projects are in terms of their individual spending. There's some things that we expect to go over. There's some things like masks on bus. We hope we're not using that during the night hour. So do you need, first of all, any questions on the summary? Again, the end recommendation is go with interactive displays, go with the math curriculum and apply the remaining portion toward the copier purchase. It's just a question of, does the board want the tutoring to stay on the table? Or do you want to take that and reallocate it, which again, it'll all go toward the copies, but the committee's recommendation.
What fiscal was missing was an explanation from the administration as to why they were recommending removing the tutor.
Did you go to speak to that?
Yeah, I can, I can share. A good portion of that, allocations, transportation. And first of all, we have to have a program to transport to. Program that we, we looked many different avenues. Whether it was through the Y and contracting with Y to maybe hire back our, our, our people. We, I went to the Retired Teachers Association, Jefferson County, sharing that we need information, or we'd like people to interact with us. Other avenues through Markford Residence Community, other places. And we just, not only myself, but our building principals, we put on information to parents all sorts of places to try to get tutors. And just like many of our other positions that are paid positions, like custodial positions, cleaners, nutrition services, stuff. It's just hard to find people out there right now to try to do any kind of work, much less tutoring. So we did have a concerted effort. I know that the board hasn't heard about the concerted effort that we've tried, but we did try all year. And we ended up putting in a model at the middle school level that looked more like a homework recovery. It's called Panther Hour. We see our teachers do that. And we also paid some teachers at the elementary to actually do some skills-based tutoring of students and ran those for a couple of weeks. Again, that's paying staff already. We're here. But it wasn't what you were looking at for a community mentoring model. And that never really got off the ground. We could continue to try that into next year, but I would ask that the board, if we did that, take a real look and maybe a hard stop at it in December if things don't get off the ground running. And that we, as a board and administration, do some planning for whatever that $75,000 looks like. If it's suggested by the committee to continue to go to that purchase, we can do that with some accounting measures, apply it out of fund balance right now and then recoup that as a accounting cost later. That's fine. We can do that. If you would want us to take another kind of crack at it to see if next fall things are changing in the employment history and/or people would like to kind of commit to and sign up for that kind of work. We definitely think we need it, but we've had such a hard time of doing that. That's, and that's only the $25,000 allocation for just the cost of people. Then trying to work with our transportation services in my update later, you'll hear some of the discussion that they've had around transportation. They are having a hard time having drivers being able to commit. So even if we do get a program up and running, having students to it means transporting them. And right now, I don't have a good commitment that we're going to give the transportation necessary in order to ensure parents and those students have the ability to come and have a ride home afterwards. It just isn't something that our bus company has committed to. And they're struggling to find drivers, just even for regular routes and have been combining some regular routes. And as you've heard through other avenues, that sports and other things have been difficult. So those are really the reasons why. It's not because we're not trying or that we don't think it's important. We absolutely think it's important and we absolutely have been trying. There's just been a couple of showstoppers along the way. I'd be very happy for us to look at and continue something into December of next year.
December this year.
Yes, to me, well, yes, December of this year, thank you. Next full year and, and see if we can get something off the ground and running. And if we do, we can utilize those dollars for what they're for.
Okay. Other members of the committee want to add anything else to the, the board there? Questions or comments in board then?
A question?
Yes.
If we decide to reallocate that money, there was funds that were used to pay teachers for doing the tutoring and things like that. That's a something's better than nothing kind of thing. Would that still be available if that's what buildings chose to you? I'm not saying we're telling buildings to do that, but if there are teachers that are giving extra time to wrap around kids because we can't find external people to come in, do we still have the funding to give to those teachers that are giving that extra time? Would that still be available too? So I guess I'm questioning us, do we put all of it back in when at least we're getting something?
My understanding is that's not the heart of what the board was looking for. If the board allows that different direction, we can certainly reallocate the funds.
My understanding, a part of what the board was looking for to start with was closing the gap from COVID and getting something up and going right off the bat. Or kind of pass that line. So I guess maybe the discussion goes to, as we do a slight pivot, what are we, what are we now looking for because we're now back face to face with, you know, where are we from there? I don't know if this is inappropriate.
So, just for clarification, the existing effort to R M S you described, what funds are being used to pay the right now, just general thought, idea of discussion?
If I understand what you're talking about, right, that within ESTR two and looking right now, is that tutoring money?
No, that's something very different. That was a software-based experiment.
Oh, after-school tutoring wages in the month?
Yeah.
That's it? So I mean, we have used all those funds from ESTR two and that is how that was being funded?
ESTR two funds, not ESTR three funds.
And we'll likely be a little bit more drawn this year to beyond the global respect.
ESTR three, the funds set aside in the ESTR three funds, I believe was a community-based mentoring program. It was not a staff-based mentoring or tutoring program.
So you said you're been the champion of that objective.
So Brad and I have worked pretty closely on. Brad, if you have some.
I just throw, you know, so we did come up with a flyer and we sent it home to all of our families saying, hey, our doors are open and and we need help, like come on in and we're ready. And we listed like reading support and we listed some things that they can do to help us during the day. I would say not big, maybe one or two for building, but then we decided to go to our staff. And I think all of us did two days, two days a week, Webster Week is afternoon, Tuesday, Thursday work for our families. We had parents sign up their kids to get extra help. But the best thing I found was that it was driven by teachers and they could design lessons to really meet those kids' needs right, right where they were. So I, I thought it was pretty powerful to have them there for that time we ran. I'd have to look back at the spreadsheet for the exact number of times, but I think we ran for above three months, two and a half, maybe. Going every day, Thursday, after school for an hour. It's nice we have them. So we don't have to transport them to somewhere. They're already here. They're under our, our guidance and that worked, that worked pretty nice having teachers.
Go ahead. Personally, I'm, I'm not quite comfortable with considering getting rid of tutoring in some sort of capacity. It might not necessarily mean that it's a community program. If, if there's at least some level of staff involvement that is compensated or should, you know, I mean, I would be interested to see what that looks like. I think that the, you know, the spirit of the COVID, the ESTR dollars is really a dress learning loss. And we're kind of getting your three away from, you know, your, your three away from when the harm was actually done to the children's learning. And, you know, internal data seems to indicate that there's about eight different levels of learning in the same classroom compared to their peers. This, this is, this change is relatively new to the learning environment. And regardless how you feel, COVID was handled, these kids didn't ask for this, they didn't. Parents didn't ask for this. But they did recognize this enough to advocate for after-school tutoring, you know. I really struggle with this. But it, I don't like to see a program stalled and it definitely seemed like there is a lot of effort for, for the try to make something work. And that it's, it's still disappointing, unfortunately, that, you know, that the community, the advocacy department is also not trying to try to figure out solution. And I definitely think that if there is a stumbling block that we as a board should help navigate through that process. And I appreciate having a discussion of all that sooner than later. Internal data also seems to suggest that if you can get a kid to try, they're successful and improving. A disadvantaged kid is less concerned about the classroom technology and more concerned that you care about their success on a one-on-one basis. I feel like this is a lost opportunity, otherwise. Feel like it's a lost opportunity to reach out to the community as well. Feel like we've lost sight of the purpose behind the use of these funds. Maybe, maybe I just cheering, you know, your sentiment as well, just, you know, a little bit of frustration. I'd like to see the program succeed and I don't know what the right solution is.
Brad?
What's your confidence level if we give this more time?
You know, I'm optimistic and, you know, first of all, I want to thank Craig for seeing that, that work that we tried to put into this and for acknowledging that we're also, you know, have that same level of disappointment that we can't get something off the ground in this fashion. I'm very, I, I'm very hopeful that we can get more people involved in our schools as we keep going and hopefully through a tutoring program. I'm less confident in the transportation piece.
Then that's after-school transportation?
It would be, it'd be an after-after-school transportation. I mean, so like the regular routes would go and then any bus that would be available after that. That's not already doing sporting events or whatever else would, would have to do that. And right now, I don't know that there's commitment that us company will be able to do that. They just don't have the drivers.
Do you feel that there's a, and, and, well, can you guys do pitch and comment on that? Do we feel that there is a way we can structure the program to get around that?
If we utilize current staffing is, that's our, that's our best mile right now, but that doesn't get to the community tutoring program piece. I am going to try to approach the community center down here in Park, right? That's one avenue that may itself available as a possibility for next year. But I, I just don't know where or how we're going to really get this up and running. We have, have very little interest. But we'll keep reaching out, but, you know, the, the interested workers just aren't out there even for very, very temporary type work.
Other comments, questions from the board on this topic? Yeah, please.
I have a question, but it's related to the copier, so I don't know if that's better placed in the fiscal.
We can address it now because it's part of this topic.
Okay. Um, the question in, and I'm sorry, it wasn't part of the fiscal discussion. I know that there was initially the proposal as far as the leasing of the copiers, but then, you know, it was proposed as far as purchasing with silver's money. Is it just a thought I had as far as like, okay, is it, you know, I wouldn't want us to be pen-wipe, home foolish kind of thing. So then we'd have to allocate, you know, whatever the lifespan of the copiers or whatever is back into the budget at that point in time, is that? She gets kind of.
It's basically frankly, the same when you do the five year lease, you do the purchase. In both cases. It's expected the equipment has a big, has a five year lifespan. So at the end of that period, you're back to the same question again.
Okay.
Now, there might be some of the equipment that maybe brings us less use than anticipated and maybe some of it will have a longer life. But effectively you give. Both paths converge at the same point again.
Okay.
With the same question they asked, but although the term lease is used, it is. For all intents and purposes, we are, we are taking a loan out.
Yes.
For five years for that amount of dollars to pay for the copiers.
Yeah.
And if I were not in any other fiscal position where we're going, we need to take a loan out for.
If I were to correct, it was a separate percent. Uh, interest on this over the five years is where the sixty thousand dollars savings coming from by purchasing outright. We don't have that interest. We're paying off.
Thank you.
So. I'll try and suggest, uh, a middle here. Which is the. Allocation is. Two hundred and. Eighty-five for the interactive displays, two sixty-five for the math curriculum. Keep twenty-five thousand dollars toward tutoring and that can include towards staff. Compensation. And the remaining one hundred. To go toward the top of your purchase. We all think of that. Yeah, it gives you the flexibility that if if you can find something, because we only spent six thousand so far on my staffing objectives or. Already allocating more than we spent from that perspective. So if you find some traction with community, I think it's still give you budgetary dollars still there.
Right, understanding the extra three dollars don't have to be allocated. Until next year. Correct. Twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
So if we go through and we start in the fall and there isn't traction or with this, we could take the remaining and allocate it somewhere else.
That's correct.
It gives you wiggle, it gives you, you know, the summer to get a jumpstart and. We go from there.
The only catch to me is to me, I understand the the difficulty in the task that was asked. The. The key to me is that this is community based. This is getting people who aren't in our school today, in our schools, helping our kids. And that to me is much less about the funding and how we might. Help fund any of the expenses that surround that. Then how do we get? We, we weren't great before COVID. But as I, if you although I've asked many times for that, I know that we're. Way, 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 way less of the number of community people that are seventy foot in our buildings today. And are being actively involved in our, you know, kids learning. And whether that's volunteering in classrooms or that volunteering after school, and I'm going to use the word volunteering much more. Then how can we go out and pay somebody to do this? And. I hate it. I don't want anything to do with asking, but to me, you don't get people to say yes by saying. Hey, everybody out there, let's put this ad out here and will you come and help us? Everybody goes, well, that's not me. That's that's it. It's somebody else who do that. But if I go and say, Fred, I need help tomorrow. Can you help me? It's awful hard for Fred to not have something he's doing tomorrow and say, no. And we got to get that personal connection somehow. And it, except I, it's unbelievably hard. I don't want, I'm not good at it. I'm not saying I'm just, I I know how to do it, but that's.
Can I add something to the mix? We used to have a lot of community volunteers. They were mentors. I don't know if any of you were on the board when we would have. Business owners would kind of adapt the student, if you will, and have lunch and do activities with them. We have big brothers, big sisters. Are they still coming?
No, they've reached out. They're trying to get the lunch buddies program back going again.
They're having a hard time finding mentors. They they, we've given them lists and they just can't get mentors.
I appreciate that. I do want to bring it back to our discussion. Just, uh, yes, I get your point and and and.
So I I'm like, if you you can separate the two topics and say, hey, what what are we going to do about volunteering and we'll find the funding for it? And is this the place that, is this the place that it's not going to be funding? Then let's, let's clean up our funding. Let's figure out we're going funding wise.
Yeah.
But not lose the objective. We want to get community into our schools. And maybe that needs to be reframed and outside of S R.
Right.
Is it just clouding the S R?
Yeah.
I guess the conversation that I'm trying to have.
And for me, with respect to S R, the main objective I have is and remains is. Learning loss number. And if we could get them through a community based on volunteer program bonus. But I guess going to come back to if I pick between those two for S R funds, I'm going with the what am I going to do? It's going to help learning today. And. That's right. That's why I came back with this.
Great. So in general, as far as a general conversation about answer funds, I would get it like. We've allocated one point one million dollars towards curriculum. Not just, you know, and, you know, yes, five hundred thousand dollars was intended to be for. Um, science and social studies curriculum. That hasn't, um, that was a best guess. And part of, part of me sees, seems to feel like. Why are we? Throwing other items into the mix for reallocation when. There are a number of different, um, items that have somewhat stalled. And that we have identified as needs. And we haven't been utilizing money for those purposes yet. Now we're, now we're trying to, aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse? Don't we have work to finish first before we decide that we have to throw other things in the mix to allocate?
Can you clarify? Sorry. What do you mean by new things in the mix?
Well. You know, the, the. The items brought forth as administrative recommendation. Seem to be. So it seemed to be somewhat new. For out, for reallocating these funds. Um, if the, if we. Set aside one point one million dollars towards curriculum, it would stand to reason that, you know. The the math curriculum adoption would fall under that one point one million dollars for how to do for curriculum. And not asking for additional funds for curriculum at this time. So. I mean, it would, it would stand to reason that we would have that discussion later on if there is a need for science and social studies curriculum. We haven't, we have. No definitive numbers on on what that might entail at this time. So. We're going to have a conversation about. How we're use like utilizing these dollars. Why are we throwing more into the mix? We have other things to get done yet.
I think that interactive display is probably going to help teach kids the end and the end for for the next decade. I. I don't think that that's getting away from educating our our children by going with that interactive display. I think that's actually a really good use of of this fund. Um, I understand where you're going with this, but, uh. Myself, I think that's. That's a key component as well.
What's currently in the classroom and how old are they? Are they smart boards?
They are projectors.
So the smart board and projector, when you look at the life of those and you have to replace the projectors, if you replace the projectors in each of the classrooms and the boards. The cost to replace individual units, I think, I mean, a bulb is two hundred fifty dollars. Just for a bulb, not, so when we look at the price there, if we're talking about redoing some of those. It, I'm looking at is more cost productive.
Well, if you look at the numbers they they provided. Over the lifespan of the of the new screens, we're saving a hundred forty thousand dollars in comparison to the projectors.
Great. I I want to clarify. I am not. I am not saying that interactive this, I support the interactive display purchase. So I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't. Um, I don't, I, I do feel like that still falls under that allocation that we we set aside for. You know, like administrative dollars you spent towards that particular purchase. So I I support that.
Wasn't the original discussion piece one and two, those were the two items that we're looking to include right now?
So what I've thrown out there is to get to six seventy-six. Is two sixty-five. Additional for math, two eighty-five for the interactive displays, a hundred thousand toward the copiers and the remaining twenty-five or twenty-six thousand dollars. For tutoring and that can include paying staff. Would someone like to make a motion in that to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
One second then.
All right, comments or questions on the motion, please?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes. To allocate of our remaining S R two and S R three funds. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in additional funding toward the math curriculum. Two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars toward the interactive displays for district classroom instruction. A hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of our printers and copiers. And twenty-five. Start twenty-five, what's twenty-five or twenty-six? Remaining for remaining dollars, saying now to go toward tutoring, which may include. Paying that.
I would like to make sure that we call out that. The tutoring funds are going to come in on S R three dollars because we want to put a gap on the S R two.
Yeah. Yes, rearrange that.
There's some.
Yeah.
All of all these to have.
Yeah. Yes. So. That's the motion. Comments or questions on the motion?
Please, Craig. So your motion also, um, acknowledges that we're we're adding money then to the curriculum. Uh, allocation portion of the S R three. Um, but.
Yes, that is what is there.
So I got a question on that. So, um. I was here initially. My understanding was you took away. Money from the math curriculum and this replaces that? Or is this in addition?
No, it it's to you. You're correct. It does not. It it does essentially restore it to nearly the same that was the original proposal for the administration over here.
But the other, that curriculum long that was initially went to another curriculum?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had, we had no budgetary numbers, but your ducts of laws.
So we're not going.
And the minute administration asked for this and we said, how about this and go forward.
Or what we at the initial was, it just is replaced.
Math, it does not go over what was originally supposed.
Right.
Other comments or questions on the motion?
What has to happen? If we're we're changing our allocation, what what has to happen with D P I then?
So there is an annual report that you provide to them that says, here's your plan. And so once, at this point, it's a once a year update we provide to them. And that's all. Well, there is lots. With how we have. Spent and managed, uh, S R that I, I think each of us. Struggle with in different areas and different places. It's caused the, it's been a blessing and a curse to this district in many ways of blessing the funds and things we're able to do. We continue to spend a lot of time, energy and resources talking about it, debating it and moving forward. And I think. The things that we're remaining here talking about are all things that I think we all want to see go forward and pick it at. What topic coming out of at this stage, I would rather see us. Move to expedite getting this cleaned up and behind us so that we can. Focus on it because they're comfortable where we can. Where we, the next great thing that we want to do, where we, how do we fund it? We're playing those conversations.
Yeah, great. The the resistance I have today is. Uh, community tutoring. What happens? What happens six months down the road? When, uh, when some of these other things like advanced learning, advanced. Learning, well, the turn coordinator isn't addressed. What happens if, uh, the paraprofessional, um, training program isn't addressed? Right now it's this. What happens down the road and, you know, there's, I mean, it looks awfully like things are changing within. Within the original intent, which I would expect. I I I I'm not unrealistic there, but I I do feel there's a lot of unfinished work that needs to get done. And I'm a little bit. I'm a little bit disappointed. Um, I just don't know how to say it.
I think there's a difference between, um. Change in the intent. And the reality of the situation, we're talking about the lack of drive drivers from the bus company, the bus company want to transfer them. There's nothing we can do there. So I think it's always been, uh, correctly or wrong, the intent. Was to go through with this program, but we're looking at the reality of the bus drivers going, hey, look, we're not going to transport you. We can't do anything about that. I mean, we we can't hire, get community members to come in and help teach. We're going to get community members to come in and drive the buses. So. Sitting on this dollars. For another couple of months for that doesn't seem like it's good to do us any good. The other part of that, the community, and I I agree with keeping the twenty-five thousand because I think that's something that is directly within our control. And that speaks to the intent of we want this program to work. We're going to keep the money behind as long as we can.
Uh, you know, to me, I'll I'll share, uh, Craig is the administrative team doesn't like to admit. You know, defeat in an area, um, especially one. That would involve our community and helping students, you know, into your. It is true, we 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 failed to get the people we needed to. You know, that doesn't mean we didn't really try. Um, but we also recognize that these funds have a shelf life and we need to look at that. There may or may not be other things within the list because there is a large list that will get done, will not get done. Or may need to have some accounting done so that we can ensure the dollars for future to still get the work done. But us still allow us to utilize it and expend the dollars. Um, the way that they under, um, the S R funding allotment can be utilized. But then can still allow us to get other work done as the actual timeline that S R was given to us. So. There may be all of those things that we have available to us. Um, but I can assure you that we are committed to continue to try to get the work done. And we are still committed to trying to get our community in our schools. So that's all I can say. And we're just trying to be honest with you and and have you guys understand where we are. So we can continue to work on these activities. Um, under the confines that we have through the D P I. And that's really what we're addressing mostly tonight is that. The confines of the grant.
I appreciate the discussion. I want to say I specifically asked several times, are there any other projects on this list that we do not expect to happen? And I have, just as you said. I have been told. So I'm not, no, no, we will move on. What remains here? The timing may be a little bit different. We may have to move around order events. And. And work. Through the S R funding. Requirements. But what I've heard is a level assurance. That we're going on it. And that's what I'm going on. And we're we're not walking away from the projects. We may have to get creative with how we, um. You know, uh, make our timelines and 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 adjust them and fix them and make sure that the funds are available when we can. You know, apply the work. All that has to happen because we do have to take into account. The work of our our teachers and the ability for them to take on some of these tasks and a timeline that. You know, doesn't distract them from their main goal, which is to educate students. Um, but we'll get there. Get there with all of it. All right. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Everybody clear on the motion? Roll call, please.
I am Johnson. Yep. Nina Johnson. Yes. David Shreman.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Wortman.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries.
This brings us to a report sitter. We have one quick question.
Yeah.
Because time is of the essence, you want to get these done appropriately. Um, the interactive displays has been, uh, through committee as well as the math curriculum adoption all the way through to board, though, actually.
Yeah.
I'm I'm hoping that you will tell me that I can start expanding those funds and that those purchases don't have to come back around three. To any other committee and or board, um, is my understanding.
No, we've got a review. We've seen the multiple quotes. We've seen. We're served as an action to find those.
I was saying. E- either, either you, we can be under the agreement that I can go or you guys can do another part.
Proof that we had a resolution to last meeting regarding that.
With the adoption, but not the spending of funds. So.
Okay.
I would, I would, I would like to either. I would, I would, I would like to either have you guys make a quick uh resolution to uh. Allow us to spend those funds or just give me the um superintendent authority to spend those.
And make a motion that we spend the funds on the interactive display. A motion to the resolution or a motion to the this part to the end, so you can vote on it as a resolution later in the day. Or do you want a motion right now? I'm indifferent.
So is there a um.
Like after the C number on? That's all I can. Is that official part language of the?
Yep.
Motion.
And I would say that we want to not exceed two six.
I would say that one, we would have to say not to exceed the amount allocated under our S R. Funding because it that's only a portion of the total.
Gotcha, alright.
Okay, so. Okay, let me second that. Well, that is to approve the. Purchase of the interactive displays amount not to exceed four hundred and five thousand dollars. And. The math curriculum, we saw a number for year one. And that number was.
Oh man, you're putting me on the spot. Um year one, I have them both up.
See, there's going to be some of this, it's going to get, I know, but this is, that's what all we need to allocate is year one.
So eighty-one at elementary for year one. And three fifteen for our math year one. And that includes um. A three-year plan of P D for our MS and um.
See, that's the stuff that we're not going to be able to get in S R funding. Gets prepaid.
Yeah, that's that's.
Alright, so.
Yeah.
So, and. The purchase of the math curriculum for the first year implementation, first year implementation amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
Um, I can we make it? You're making me do math on the spot. Uh ninety-one plus three fifteen.
I rounded up.
Four sixteen.
Yeah.
I, what did you say, four hundred?
I said four hundred. Three fifteen and eighty-one is three ninety-six.
Thank you.
Ninety-one.
Right, but the number amount you gave is your purchasing pilot.
For this.
In that year one amount that included.
Okay, Diana, we can cash that at a different motion, this will get us started on big purchases that we need. Yeah, alright, then it'll get us on the big versus. Okay, so. Motion is to approve the purchase of the interactive displays about not to exceed two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and to approve. The materials for the year one of the math implementation amount not to exceed four hundred thousand. Yes, sure.
Um you good came with that because I thought you said was like just four hundred and change.
No, I was not doing math correctly, clearly I need a new math curriculum, so.
Again, this gets it going, so they put the first part here because they know it's back in the summer for anything that.
And the only thing I would say is if I can come back over the summer for some deal for me to purchase it all upfront, I would definitely do that, but I certainly appreciate it.
And with the middle school math, they do a considerable discount to purchase year one and year two together in the P D. So, we have estimates and we're ready to go on that at about. Hundred thousand for your.
We could do a follow-up. Yes, we bring that back.
So.
But this the.
This gets us moving.
It does not have high school curriculum, that's correct, that's correct. It didn't do that in year one, it was not.
Then it was not year one, correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the motion?
Okay, we do anticipate the high school will have a dollar amount by December next year.
So for clarification purposes, yeah, this uh S R two, S R three spending of additional dollar amount of. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand, we just became four hundred and something dollars.
Yeah, not at all.
So we, from the S R perspective, as a result of our prior motion, we have now allocated from S R funds. A total of. Eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. But as we said repeatedly, because we allocated from S R perspective, doesn't mean that they have authorization to go and spend it. Even now asking for authorization to spend a portion of that allocation. Got it, four hundred thousand of the.
So instead of six hundred, two hundred, it's just four hundred. Roughly.
I know we got six hundred, two hundred, eight hundred.
Because you had, the original portion got pulled down from nine, whatever, into six hundred. Then this came back into bringing back up to close to the full funding. What you're authorized is instead of the two or whatever, you're just splitting the difference and say this will be thirty or about four hundred.
I got confused by the sufferer of elections here.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Uh Diana Johnson.
Yes.
Tina Johnson, yes. David Schreiner.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Wortman.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yep.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, start replacing them. We we appreciate getting going fast. Okay, so. A quick superintendent reporting will be.
I am sorry.
Okay, uh this is the report for May uh twenty-two, whoa. Uh congratulations to our school resource officers, last week was um the uh national police week. So I I just want to say uh these uh few people and also um not just them, but. The whole team uh of police department here in Watertown and. Their colleagues within the county services uh who help us uh on a day-to-day basis. Um I can't say um anything more than just thank you for their service. Uh they serve and protect every every day. Oh man, we can't do what we need to do without their help and support, so I just want to thank them. Also, oh, there we go, uh class of nineteen seventy-two, um you heard Drew talk about the recognition. Uh those are two pictures, the one on the left is the number are are the people who were uh here that day. How many, uh Josh?
Thirty-three.
Huh?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, and then you can see uh them in in the smile on their faces as they went through the parade in the hallway. Um it was just a great day last Friday. Uh also, we did have Benson Speaker, uh Justin Schaefer, you know, he he did say STEM is dope. Um but I I want you to know his speech uh went well beyond STEM is dope. He talked about A I and he talked about uh how A I is infiltrating uh workforces. About thirty s- uh percent of businesses um are utilizing A I and A I services. Uh he himself uh works in the production field, I mean by production is video production. Um he's done shows for PBS, ABC, he's been on commercials, he's done voiceover uh stuff for other companies. Um and he will tell, he he did tell the students. If you do not know how to prompt A I and or work with an A I, I am not hiring you. He was that clear about it, and he said, and as you go into the future, you're going to hear more and more of that, and so. We uh should really be thinking about that as we're sending students into the future uh of job and employment. The other big takeaway that he shared with students is that you need to start cultivating your personal brand. Uh well, well more than a resume, um curating and continuing to curate your personal slash professional brand is a very important thing. Um to uh the way of the work for world in the future. Um that may start with something as simple as LinkedIn and other things, but it goes well beyond that. Uh because true entrepreneurial ship starts with being able to tell your story, if you can't tell your story, I'm going to tell the story of your company. Uh and so just really uh some really good things to think about. And you can tell by the response from the students who sat there and now, I don't know, maybe a hundred of whom sat there for a selfie. Uh asked uh really thoughtful questions along the way, I think it was a great thing, and I want to congratulate and thank. Um both uh Josh Kerr and his team, but also um Barton Benson and the A E Mike Benson Foundation for continuing. To have and send a speaker to, in meeting with Barton Benson, he said, boy, you know, if Madeline all right was still around. I'd love to get that level of kind of speaker here in Watertown. And I said, okay, well, we'll try to work on it for next year, so I don't know what we're going to do. But I told him, if we're going to do that, that's going to be a considerable amount more money, and I'm going to have to involve the police department. Maybe with some of those people, the F B I, because when Michelle Obama came, there was a whole uh list of things that needed to happen, so um we'll look at it. Uh and then lastly, I I think I shared with you before, go right way, uh is having a hard time with your drivers. Um they're posting uh for positions uh to support uh go right way, um. Please let us know if you know of anybody uh who has that. In working with them um through their contract, I did share with them that they were outside of their contract. Uh with us and that they weren't being able to produce the transportation needs in the school district. Were we able to get a waiver and now I'm utilizing um Cobason and some other. Possible places to help do some alleviation, so you may have seen some of the um sports trips times. Changed in the recent week or so, Sarah and I, um Sarah was a a great effort in making sure. Um that uh we got that done and uh she definitely is the firmer person in the room than I was. I was being very much too nice, she said, but we got it accomplished, so thank you, Sarah. Uh and then also here's some dates for you to think about, um in May, no, no school, May twenty-ninth. Juneteenth is last day for students, July ninth, last day for teachers, graduations on the tent, if you're coming. Uh and then the community dates that um are there, and I know that you're also working on some other dates uh that will come forward later, so I have any questions?
Alright, thank you. This going?
Alright, uh some of this we've already covered and um. I'll brief on those liability insurance property evaluations, uh with increased in uh costs, construction costs. James Brooker recommended us increase on our um liability coverage, uh the committee discussed this. Didn't feel that at this time that that was warranted, um we did the uh the coverage and you know, the need for this right now. Uh fees, uh fees will be on the agenda here later tonight, but. Um we talked about the uh used student fees, there's some slight changes on those. Um we're increasing the student breakfast and lunch fees and um. We are also discussed the the custodian fees and making the room um a little add a little clarity to the. Um the usage for uh. Room renting um areas in the school. Rent services, we've already gone over that, um but we discussed the rental versus purchasing on that. Um Douglas Church's A C project cost update, um we have an update on that, the timeline's on track, however, there's a potential for a budget. Um increase um and um you were meeting with C G Schmidt on Friday, of that go?
Good. Yeah, I would say so, uh we have uh follow-up email or I would say another follow-up, um. So I don't know, we take another follow-up, face to face, when they have their final structural summaries. Um but we made it very clear that, you know, what's been approved is, I is going to go, so. Sarah was very clear in saying, we're not paying more than this, so get it in budget.
Good, good to hear, thank you. Uh the dust collection proposal, you'll see that later tonight as well, um we have been just, we got a couple extra bids on this. Um for the wood shop at RMS, uh we recommend as kind of moving forward with resolution for the bid from Donaldson. Uh it will be upper ninety, um is what you'll see on that, um and. Cool update. Um the pool update on the cool project is completed successfully. Uh S R, we are going to go over, we talked about that enough, uh payment report, we had a spirited discussion on this. Um and we decided to leave the report for now, um and there were no questions in the main report.
Comments or questions in that report? Thank you. H R.
Yes, we had our meeting on Monday, May fifteenth, um we adjusted the start time to right about um six o'clock due to a prior um meeting. We went through um. Introductions with some of our new committee members and things like that. Um as far as the consent agenda, we reviewed staff appointments, resignations and terminations. Um and in taking a look at that, we realized that when our meeting happens on Monday, but if the next Monday rolls around, there are some changes and things like that. That happened with those um names and the shifting around and stuff like that, and so um they, you will see. Um on the resolution that comes through as far as staff appointments and all that kind of stuff, there would be a little asterisk. By the ones that were added or changed, I should say changed since the previous um H R meeting. Just to kind of give the H R committee a point of reference to that, if there's, you know, going up, or something like that, then we're able to easily reference that. Um summer school staff. We um we do that and there is a um resolution on that tonight, those you will see throughout till um the fall or so. Um, we also have a resolution for support staff notice of employment. Um so there's a one list as far as that's concerned, on people that were extended notices to return for the next school year. Um and then support staff compensation proposal, um this is something that's been on the radar for the H R committee. As far as being able to help with um recruitment and things like that for these positions, um. Margaret did a great job bringing forth some information um as far as um. Different companies that she's worked with and stuff like that, it's something of policy. Um I do need to get a couple of bits on that, but we do have a baseline as far as cost is concerned. And so you will see a resolution on that tonight um in like a specific amount not to exceed. So then that gives them the ability to be able to go forward with that work um. That we very much need done in order to be able to be properly, properly staff and educate our kids. Um committee agenda planning. Um as far as the June meeting is concerned, um we'll of course have consent agendas, we'll have the employee. Um satisfaction survey results, um if there's a survey administrator um availability as far as that goes. Um and then we did enter into um the closed session. Um due to a specific. A specific situation and then um we ended closed session and adjourned, next meeting is Monday, June nineteen.
Comments or questions on that report? Alright, thank you. Educational services.
Yes, uh committee met, all uh members were present plus a handful of others, two topics on the agenda was the avid program update. Which got pushed from the previous ed services as well as a revisit of the advanced learner program. Um on the advanced learner program, uh there was some expectation both to uh to the report that was given at the last board meeting. As well as the resolution that got tabled. That we would discuss that at greater length during ed services, I think that we did. And ultimately concluded that no additional resolution was needed for the funding of that position in perpetuity. As every other position underneath Jared's uh purview uh gets the same review on a regular basis, so no resolution was needed. Uh we did not get any additional uh report from the advanced learners committee, just still the same presentation that we had. That was given to the board prior with the five recommendations. The first one, of course, hiring a coordinator and the next four, let's wait till we get the coordinator and we'll work on. Um so, then on the avid program, uh that discussion was mainly uh about the success we've had with the elective. And how pushing that uh program and those efforts and those uh methods building wide. Um I'll I'll say aren't where we want them to be, uh so we're on a, we're on a track. Uh that track might be a little bit longer uh than where it was expected five years ago. Um however, uh we're going to get some updates from um Jenny and Jared at the September meeting. And then again in November to kind of uh. Say uh make a a more uh thorough assessment as to corrective uh measures that we need. In order to get it back to where we want to go. And the next meeting, I think, is on the. Wherever the bottom of the numbers. They'll come up on my calendar, I'll then, the thirteenth.
Alright, thank you. Comments or questions in that? Alright, planning?
Um we started with the communications audit update, Dr. Burke let us know what are the highlights at this point in time. Informing us that we are about one fourth of the way through.
The stakeholder groups have been surveying. That data will be collected very similar to what the advanced learner audit went through and then a summary brought back to the group um that we're hoping to see that plan in July and then we'll discuss that further. The main lift in this meeting was to look at planning for the twenty twenty three, twenty four school year. And we had some discussion around what is the purpose of the planning committee? And what kinds of things should that be focusing on, keeping in mind that we have to have something that's manageable? As well as meaningful. A lot of meaningful things out there, but there are some really heavy lifts and we narrowed it down to those four key areas with just um what the focus point of those would be, being restructuring the admin team, board development, board evaluation and board norms. How we're moving that together as a group, continuing with the communication audit and then looking at the strategic plan primarily focusing on math and reading. So more of that will come down the pike in upcoming months, but we at least establish what are focal areas and then we'll narrow that down. Meeting, next meeting is July.
Thank you. Comments or questions on that? I'll make a couple comments and that, uh when the report was given, it was about a quarter of the way through the audits. We're more than halfway through the audit now. And we're expecting probably to have an audit report at the June board meeting uh with the communication plan to be presented to the planning committee and then the board in July. At least if we stay on, you know, D and D stays on their track, that's what they're looking for. So just an update.
Does that, where does that dovetail in with the marketing objective and Esther, is that why, when you say communication, is that marketing?
Yes, so we're using, we're utilizing the marketing dollars to uh help pay for the contract for D and D um for um at least year one. Um and that was a portion of the style, so. All right. And then Paul, did you not mean? All right. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. This is resolution nine two two three. The consent agenda includes our board meeting minutes, committee summaries. Under personnel staffing, you have retirements and resignations as well as hirings. You have the approval of bills, the first reading of policies and the second reading of policies. There are no policies for first reading this evening, but there are for second reading, I call it something. Was there a new law presentation? There is one coming at our next meeting.
So that might be your one where more other board that was there.
I shall attend to that. We always come in and talk. All right, so resolution nine two, nine two two three, the consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Fred, seconded by Tina. Comments or questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson.
Yes.
Tina Johnson, yes. David Schrader.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Warpin. Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Moving on to action items, we have a number of resolutions this evening, the first of which is nine two two four. additions to the twenty twenty three summer school staff. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Moved by Tina, seconded by Diana. Comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson, yes. Tina Johnson, yes. David Schrader.
Yeah.
Dave Smith.
Yes.
Craig Warpin.
Yes.
Brad Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Next is resolution nine two two five. This is twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year support staff notice of continuing employment. Do I hear a motion?
Some more.
Second. Moved by Tina, seconded by Fred. Comments or questions on the motion?
Just for clarification purposes, what is this?
Still, every year we give notification to those staff members who have been continuing on contract for the following sort of what we do for teachers. And this would be just regular non-certified.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson, yes. Tina Johnson, yes. David Schrader.
Coach Stan.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Warpin.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Next is the resolution nine two two six, the school fees for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second, moved by Fred and seconded by Craig. Comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next is resolution nine two two seven, building use fees for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Do I hear a motion?
Some more.
By Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Fred. Comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution nine two eight, this is twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year breakfast, lunch and milk prices. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
By Fred, do I hear a second? Seconded by Craig. Comments or questions on the motion? Tina.
Um I just wanted to clarify as far as in the proposed school fees um under RMS um that your, it just lists your book, whereas in the high school, it lists your book optional. I'm assuming it's optional for reference.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So you're back to the previous motion ninety two six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Okay, comments or questions on the motion for nine two two eight, please?
A slight one is um that prices are going up for breakfast so much. Are reduced prices also increasing? That's not signified on here. We're not recommending that. Oh, I was clarified because it didn't show that it's the same.
All right, any other comments or questions on the motion for nine two two eight, breakfast, lunch and milk prices? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is resolution nine two two nine. Name is way to go backwards and forward, purchase of desk collector. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Fred, seconded by Diana and everybody wants. Comments or questions on the motion?
Yeah. Just get a brief update of all the things that are included. I I mean, the green check makeup barrier, that that's got a burner on it.
It does, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna be pulling six thousand CFM out of the building and you're trying to make it up with six thousand CFM, pushing it in, eating it. Correct. Okay, and we got three bids and a buy, I trust?
Yes.
And twice around that fiscal.
Yeah, yeah, and then I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's our source of buck.
Average.
Personal.
Um I know there was a question about warranty involved. It was a nice two-year labor and ten-year manufacturer.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the motion nine two two nine? Roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson, yes. Tina Johnson, yes. David Schrader.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Warpin.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Next is resolution nine two three zero, this is the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four AODA grant renewal. Do I hear a motion?
Some more.
Moved by Tina. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by David Schrader. Comments or questions on the This is an annual grant from the state for the AODA program. If you have the application, it's attached.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
In the description part of the summary of the proposal, it talks that the focus is going to be on students with referrals. Is there a focus on those without referrals? The use of vaping and things like that is very high. Many of those aren't getting caught um until it's too late. So I'm just wondering, are we being more proactive or reactive?
Um well.
Through the grant focus, sorry.
Through the grant focus, it's gonna be on uh
The more.
The more reactive side. Um and that's the side where we're gonna need that, but we 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 focus on both areas, so.
All right, here's what this is. Also, we have in the grant um elementary AODA curriculum for kindergarten, fourth grade. That student service people would go in and teach to everybody about the effects of poor choices as it, you know, comes to vaping and whatnot. I don't know if all of you can recall, but we used to do a lot with Red Ribbon Week in October. So looking at bringing that back at all of the elementary schools and then there's a program for middle school and high school. It's not at our school, they call it, rather than Red Ribbon Week. And lots of school-wide presentations on vaping and tobacco, so.
Perfect.
So, yeah, it's more than just for referrals for repeat offenders. Yeah.
All right, the business committee. This one did not, as it was a Same with the next one. In previous practice, this has come directly to the board. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Diane Johnson, yes. Tina Johnson, yes. David Schrader.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Craig Warpin.
Yes.
Brad Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Next is resolution nine two three one. Which is the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school-based mental health grant renewal. Do I hear a motion on nine two three one?
Some more.
Moved by Diana, is there a second? Seconded by Mike.
Who was that?
Yeah, thank you. Comments or questions on the motion?
Since this has been a key focus of our strategic plan over the last several years, uh I'd like to make a motion to send this to committee for, either for due
Which which committee, by the way?
I would assume ed services, but I think that's where it's landed in the path. I frankly don't care, but
What is the, what we, what's the
I'll second the motion. All right, discussion on the motion, Senate committee.
This is funding, what are we, what are we looking to achieve of this going to the committee?
To to review, this has been a key part of not having feedback on how we've been using the grant in the past, the success of it, the efforts that we put into it. Uh the results of it.
I would think that this is just the renewal of the grant, I think, sending the fund, the the spending of the funding from the grant to the committee for review would be a, would be a good dischoice, I think, but passing the the renewal of the grant on tonight is a separate matter. Let's get the money and then let's talk about how we're gonna spend it.
I see Fred's point about in terms of getting an update of where we are from a strategic plan perspective on initiatives related to this is one topic, but applying for renewal to save grants that is a portion of that program and it was not in any way funding all of the programming, this small portion of the programming.
I guess a question that I have along with Dave's point is, do we need a resolution to put something in committee? Isn't that something we just talk to the chairperson and say, hey, can we get an update on this?
It was the table, it was the table, the resolution.
Oh, to do that.
I think his motion is to refer this to committee.
For, yes.
That's right.
Oh, okay, good.
It's just
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Advanced learner. We heard.
I, I'm understanding now.
Yes, can we Can we make an addendum, and this is just a question, not putting anything off the air, we make an addendum to the emotion for approval of the renewal that expenditure of the funds needs to go forward to the committee. This would approve the renewal, but the expenditure has to go to committee. Which I think is what you're looking for.
This doesn't go out. Expenditure of these funds, not that cleanly, it's one big purchase that I'll go to.
All right.
It's lots of smaller ones and some is is helping send it back fund operational expenses. So it doesn't fit cleanly into, oh, there's a specific purchase tied to these funds.
Okay.
Can we just clarify, we have to get these, so we apply for the grants. We may not even get picked by the Department of Public Instruction to renew the money. So it's just making awareness that we wanted to apply for the grant. Then I think we should see if we get the funding, right?
Is there a timeline for an application?
Yeah, we're already through that and everybody, the the question uh, I see two questions here. Uh one is a question that I I believe Dave Smith asks, which is if we're gonna continue in this work, I would like to hear more about it because it is part of our strategic plan. So it is a valid question and we should look into that. The other question, the question that's on the resolution is if we were to apply for this grant, would you receive it? Um and that is the question that we're asking. You see the details within the grant that we're asking to utilize and spend the money on. It is one portion of a spa, it's a smaller amount of all of the funds that we are using. Some from the greater health organizations, some from our operational costs and and other small entities that are helping with this programming, um you know, uh in-kind dollars from the county, those kinds of things that are that we're all working together on to help support mental health. Um the question is, would you receive the money if we were awarded? That's what's on the resolution. If you want another resolution to talk about reviewing the program and everything else, you know, I I think that's valid too.
Yeah, question, no, that we don't need a resolution to put something on a committee agenda. In terms of an update on where we are with initiatives related to, that's not related to the larger topic of social emotional learning, other situation.
So the purpose to have it go back into many mostly to um just kind of review the program or do you, is there something that you's, that you're concerned about that warrants some further discussion?
Well, it's, it's a significant fog of the greater objective and how we're going. And although we can look at it and say, wow, free money, but there still is a whole lot of effort we have to put of our resources to say, let's utilize that money in the way that it's granted. And not seeing it go through committee just says, keep going, do, do what we're doing. We don't even know what we're doing. And that doesn't that doesn't, that doesn't feel right to me. I'm not saying that there's anything, any circumstance, but it's it's a major objective we have.
I, I don't
We're a little bit on the AODA. I mean, there's some of that that we could, but the AODA stuff we've been doing for decades and decades and decades, sure, it morphs and change, but the the mental health is a much fresher objective that we're trying to get different traction on.
I don't, I don't know if that's, those are two different things here. I'm confused because this is an application for renewal of the grant. It is not expenditure of the funds or anything, it's just getting the money. I think you're correct and I think we should have a larger discussion on how we are handling this and how we are going forward with this program. But I don't see stopping an application for a grant benefits that discussion.
So are we, but our superintendent just said in reality what we're approving is receiving those. We're receiving those funds, which the use of them is outlined in here.
But Aaron just said we may not get the funds.
We may not, but we have no, the board has no other action from this point on.
Yes, we do. When these, these funds received, we can with the board can
Well, it's also, so you think of it as that there, so keep in mind, this is all part of our, our larger budget for twenty three, twenty four. That's one thing, this is one.
That's one thing, this is one small funding piece of a larger program. And so that's what I'd make, it's, it's not, it's not a simple one-to-one relationship here of I can draw a line between this money and one single thing we're doing. That's not the way this one works. Any other comments or questions on the motion to refer to committee?
So would it be more appropriate perhaps to vote this particular motion down or referral to committee? Approve the motion for the application, and then possibly have a follow-up motion to review this particular mental health program via Ed Services Committee?
Yes, except for, we just said you don't need a motion to refer something to committee.
Right.
No motion needed, but otherwise, the first two points, I agree.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna call, roll call vote on the motion to refer, unless.
Can we summarize that first, because we touched in a few different circles, and I.
So the current, the current motion on the table is to refer this resolution to committee, which means we would no longer vote on this resolution this evening. That's what's on the table right now, that's what I'm about to call vote on, referring this to committee.
Got it.
Let's go with that piece first, okay?
All right.
Do you have any questions on that motion to refer to committee?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson.
No.
Tina Johnson.
No.
David Schrader.
No.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Wortman.
No.
Fred Young.
No.
Tony Arnett.
No.
Mike Higgins.
No. And the motion fails, therefore, we're back to the motion on the resolution, which as noted, essentially says we will, we will receive the grant if we are awarded. Questions or comments now on that motion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson.
Yes.
Tina Johnson.
Yes.
David Schrader.
Yes.
David Smith.
Oh.
Craig Wortman.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And there's a follow-up. I believe it would ought to fall to Ed Services most likely to refer this, because essentially you could try and kick it over to planning if you wanted, but I think that the overall topic where we are with that, with.
Yeah. Not an issue, I mean, myself and Jenny will be reviewing the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar for topics. I'm not saying this one is not coming up soon, or not sure if it made last year's list of topics, so.
Okay.
We'll just have to review it and review it with the committee and make sure that we put forth the calendar topics. And this one should be on it.
As I thought, but planning, remember, our focus is math and reading.
Yep.
So to stick more with that, it would fall more to.
Right.
At some point in time with that leadership, I'd like to understand the history of the issue, so I can understand why the discussion.
All right, our next resolution is nine two three two, which is revolution operating redemption of certain general obligations, school improvement bonds. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second, moved by Fred, seconded by Craig. So this was discussed at a prior fiscals, and not this last, not this May meeting, we discussed in April. And what we are essentially doing is prepaying on certain bonds, which will create sort of an odd shape for that, that bond issue itself, but when we look at our debt overall, it helps essentially bring forward a drop in our annual debt payments by several years.
But thank you for the preemptive explanation of my question, which I now don't have to ask.
So, and again, as, as with all these, the, the district taxpayers are saving money when we prepay like this. But it also, again, like it gets a more predictable cost curve for our debt in subsequent years. Do we have a motion? Any other comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson, yes.
Tina Johnson, yes.
David Schrader.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Craig Wortman.
Yes.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the last one, which should show a number of corrections, is resolution nine two three three, stat support compensation consulting services. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tina, is there a second?
Second. Mike's got it.
Seconded by Mike. Comments or questions, as was briefly described by Tina in her report to the HR committee?
Why, why a thirteen thousand dollars, I didn't come into order?
It's been our habit in the past for these particular studies to come to the board for approval. So while the dollar amount does not meet the threshold, the topic meets prior practice. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Diana Johnson, yes.
Tina Johnson, yes.
David Schrader.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Craig Wortman.
Upstein.
Fred Young.
Yes.
Tony Arnett.
Yes.
Mike Higgins.
Yes. And the motion carries. Let's bring this back to public input, second time of meeting where members publicly address the board. Is there anyone online?
Just Tyler saying how much he misses you.
And.
We miss you too, Tyler. Are you successful at two thousand and events?
All right. Hearing nothing else, entertainment board. Moved by Craig, seconded by Diana. All of the favors. Opposed, we stand adjourned.
And isn't it great that the maintenance team put these?